All right, please take your seats. Hey, John. How are you?
Excited.
About what?
Oh, you'll find out.
Oh, what do you mean, "I'll find out"? All right, let's get started. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Champagne County Board Committee of the Hole, Tuesday, October 14th at 6:32 PM. Roll call, please.
Burksen. Carter. Coort. Esri.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Hartke.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Kibler.
Here.
Langenhine. Maxwell.
Here.
McGuire. Michaels. Mitchell. Petrie. Whisenberry. Richards.
Here.
Rosales.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Schwartz. Kurtz.
Here. We have a quorum, thank you. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes legislative budget hearing.
So moved.
What's that, Stan? Oh, let me finish. Okay, thank you. You'll be first. August 25th, 26th, and 27th of 2014, I have a first. I need a second from Max. Thank you. Any changes, discussion on these? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Motion for Committee of Hole, September 9th, 2014, September 30th, 2014.
So moved.
John and Jeff, thank you. Any changes, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. A motion to approve the agenda and addenda, please. Geraldo and Max, thank you. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public participation. We have just a few for public participation. Each will have five minutes to make a statement. And we'll go one hour if it takes that long, but I don't think so. So we'll start with Mr. Scott Harper. Please step up to the center table, sir. Press the center button on the microphone and introduce yourself to us. And make your statement, please. Thank you. That's it, you got it.
Hi, I'm Scott Harper. I live in Mohammed, Illinois, with my family. And the reason why I'm here today, I don't, it doesn't look like it's on the agenda. I know it was on the agenda last month. And there's other, a lot of people in the community here also, I think for the same reason, that we're real passionate about the poker run thing. And there's a lot of good folks in this community that do a lot of great things for people locally. And the reason why we're all here today is really as a feeling of just being able to have that conveyed to you guys, that what we do is for the good of the people that need it. You know, we don't, none of us have big shiny administration offices that we're paying for salaries and things like that. What we do is we raise money and we give it to the community, the people that need it. So I guess that's kind of what we're all about. And there's a lot of several groups here represented today. And we have a lot of events throughout the year that happen in Champagne, Urbana. And that money stays in Champagne, Urbana, and we want to keep it that way. So that's really all I have.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Thank you for your time. My name is Randy McCormick. I live in Dewey, Illinois. I'm the president of the Regulators Motorcycle Association. And we are a 501(c)(3) corporation, or C-3 corporation, excuse me. And we've been doing these philanthropies for many years in the community. All these kind, big-hearted people behind me have also engaged in philanthropy work for many, many years, pouring countless dollars of their own, out of their own pockets, to make things happen for the betterment of our community. One common thread bonds us together to start, which is the love for the ride, and that's what we do. I've been riding for many decades myself, and it doesn't, wouldn't surprise me if collectively we've got hundreds of years in this room of experience. But one thing I can say is these are fundraisers. The poker runs are not a gambling affair. The poker chip, or the card, or the marble that has a value to it, is very simply a means of allowing people to engage in some kind of event throughout the day, in a competitive nature. That money is 90% of the time that that poker chip or card generates is donated back to the cause. These are post-tax dollars that we give out of our own pockets, the business owners give out of their own pockets every year. Countless hours and the administration of putting these events together that all these folks behind me share, they've all engaged in it. And it's just a small handful of the people in our community that give back to our community to make a difference, because that's what we want to do. Burn victims, cancer patients, children that are left parentless because of accidents, things of that nature. We've all involved with veterans throughout the year, and years, for decades. And I encourage you, when this comes up, to please consider, if you're not aware and you want to get more educated, please come out and join us for the day. We can get information, understand what it's all about. This is, this is good stuff. And I can't, I just, I encourage you not to tax those benefits or discourage the efforts of these people and myself and people that engage in this type of thing. It's a wonderful thing. And I could go on. I won't. Five minutes is not long enough for me, so I'm going to stop. I think these guys behind me can attest to that. But if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them after the meeting or, but Randy McCormick again is my name, feel free to reach out to me anytime. I'm listed.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for your time and your efforts on the council. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Stan Friesi?
Is it on? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for letting us talk tonight. Like Randy said, we have poker runs, we raise money. 100% of the money we raise goes to whatever the charity is that we raise the money for. I'm affiliated with the Dick Andrew Memorial Ride. We've given $320,000 in 17 years to Shriners Children's Hospital. We do an MDA concert every year, $20,000, $30,000. All that money goes. People that do win these poker runs, they donate the money back, so it ends up with the kids anyway. So I know $25 is what this fee is, but that takes away from a kid. And that's what we don't see happening. We can't see that. And I've contacted Payette, Vermillion, Douglas, and Ford Counties, they're not going to touch it. They said, "We do too good a work to bother with charging us for running these poker runs," which means if you guys decide you do want to pass it, whenever the time comes, we can end the poker run in another county. We don't have to end it in Champagne County. You lose the money from the food, the drinks, the gas, everything. It can all go somewhere else. And they all told me, I talked to every board president and county clerk, they welcomed us to end every poker run in one of their counties. And that was in the last three days I talked to them, Friday and yesterday. The last one called me back yesterday from Ford County. And that's basically where we stand. We don't think it's a good bill, because in reality, it's not gambling. In our run, people pay $20 to go on the ride. I buy them a pen, a patch, a gift, which is half the time, a tee-shirt. They get breakfast and lunch. Figure that out. That's $20. Cost me $13,000 to put, to give the hospital $10,000 to $13,000. So that's another reason we don't think it's a good idea, because we pay our own money out to do this, and to help kids. Swan Special Care, Crosspoint, Crisis Nursery, the toy run does that, and everything else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't have any other slips. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to any issue before us, or otherwise in the audience? Okay. Then I'll be closing public participation. Thank you. Communications. Is there any communications from the board? Okay, I don't see any. Then we'll move to the committees. Astrid, your committee is first, Justice and Social Services. Please turn on your microphone.
Can I have a motion to, yeah. Can we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Stan.
I'll make an omnibus motion to accept and place all the reports on file.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I guess that's it.
That's it. No chair's report? Okay. Thank you very much. That was nice and easy. All right, let's move on to finance. Yes, James?
I skipped an opportunity to give a communication.
Sure.
Because I intended to do it during my chair's report under policy, but given that we have a lot of folks here who might be interested in hearing this, but may not be interested in enterprise zones.
Right.
I was going to go ahead and say it. The poker run bill that was on the board's docket, the Committee of the Hole's docket, last month failed. Nobody chose to amend it to a zero fee. Nobody chose to do something else to move it forward, and it failed. And you can check and see how that vote went and contact those individuals. I intend to bring it back next month, so we can consider it at the Committee of the Hole next month, a second time. Because essentially, because of the way the state passed that law, if there isn't some kind of registration, and that doesn't say anything to how much the fee is, if there isn't some kind of registration, it's considered illegal now in the state of Illinois, if you don't have a license or a registration to do it. So I think we should fix that. I think we should reconsider it. Maybe some of the folks who voted against it last time around will think about that before we talk about it again.
Chris, did you have something?
Yeah, I don't know, this is kind of out of order, but if I can just make sure I understand the situation here, since we've got a lot of people in the audience who are concerned about this. You know, I think the board, my understanding is the board was offered the opportunity to regulate these things last time, and the board voted no, meaning the board didn't think they needed to be regulated. Since then, I guess the, one of our state's attorneys has come back and looked at this and said, "The way she reads the law, if you don't, if the counties don't license it, they're illegal." So I'm kind of curious, and I would ask, I mean, we don't, we're not supposed to do Q and A with the audience, but if any of you who are involved in this could, you know, get in touch with, get in touch with their board members, let us know what you think the other counties out there are doing. Because we're understanding, you know, we tried to say, "No, we're not going to regulate it." Then we find out, "Well, we got to license it. The state says we got to license it, or it's illegal." So if anybody's got any guidance here as far as what's really going on here, I'd like to hear it.
Well, does anybody want to suspend the rules on this, to discuss it? But what I'm saying is that I think that any of the participants in this would want to send communications to us. We would accept that. You can have it to any of the county board members or to me as the chair. We'd be happy to disseminate it among our county board members, if you give us any direction or any comments that you'd like to send to us concerning that, and we will obviously take it under very, very serious consideration. Jim, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, Ralph?
And Ralph, I'm breaking the rules here a little bit, but this is important.
I know of a couple of the groups legislative people are in the audience. If we could get their cards, I would suggest having some discussions with them. I know they're going to go to Springfield and talk to their state organization about these issues, and maybe that would be something we want to do before we bring something forward. So I can get their cards.
Thanks, Jim. Ralph? Microphone, please, and...
Wouldn't it be possible for our legal department to get a statement on that for us?
That's good. We'll ask that as well. Chris? Yeah. Thank you. All right. Thank you all for coming. We really do appreciate it, and we will discuss this, I promise you that. Just get us all the information you can. We have to move forward. Finance, start with, can I have the phone? Chair? I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Jeff. Our finance starts with Chair Alex and 88.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first item in the finance agenda is a report and recommendation. We've got a presentation here on enterprise zones in Champagne, Urbana. So please introduce yourselves and take it away.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kathy Larson, and I work in the Champagne County Regional Planning Commission. And we have a report and discussion tonight for you, and a request regarding the local Champagne and Urbana enterprise zones. These zones are a partnership between the City of Champagne, the City of Urbana, and the county. And those partnerships have been in existence since the 1980s on these zones. And we also have the Champagne County Economic Development Corporation as a partner as well. So tonight's presentation, we have four pieces to it. We'll have an overview from Craig Ross with the Champagne County Economic Development Corporation regarding general zone importance and impact. And I'll provide an overview of enterprise zones in general. We have TJ Blakeman with the City of Champagne here to provide the Champagne-specific program proposal and request. And we have Kate Ferrer from the City of Urbana to provide the Urbana program and request. So I'll go ahead and hand it over to Craig.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Craig Ross, the Executive Director of the Champagne County Economic Development Corporation. I had the pleasure of talking to you not too long ago about EDC. And I'm here to make a few general comments about the importance of the enterprise zone. The items are up there on the wall as far as growing, the reasons we do economic development promotion activity in the county are pretty clear. We grow the tax base, employment grows. Our ultimate goal is to grow the size of the entire economy and to remain competitive. And the comments I wanted to make really get to that point of being competitive. In the economic development competitive arena, we work with both corporations here locally that may be deciding to stay, move, or expand. And we also work with a lot of site selection firms who are helping companies locate or relocate. And in that process, the, one of the primary goals is to stay in the process of, and we call it in the hunt, but in the process of consideration through the early cycles, so that you get down into the final one or two decision points. It's crucial to be able to do that. And Illinois does not have a large number of competitive programs as economic incentives, as many of you may be aware. And we've utilized the enterprise zone as one of those local incentives with existing employers and with new employers. The sales tax alone on a new construction is a significant amount of incentive. And I've had grad students look at the return on investment in those situations, and usually within a couple of years, the larger payrolls pay back, the tax break entirely, so that within the first few years of a 40 or a 60-person employment gain, we've paid back the incentives, and then we're to the point of making new revenues and growing the economy. So I wanted to make those general points about the importance. It's a competitiveness issue, and if we don't have it in Champagne County, we suffer in competing with other states, and we suffer in competing with other communities that have enterprise zones, because they can offer those levels of incentives. So I appreciate your time, and I just wanted to articulate the importance of the zones to the county. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions at this point, before we move on to the cities? I see nuns. Thank you.
So just to give you an overview on enterprise zones in general, we've had enterprise zones in Illinois since 1982, when they created the Act for Illinois Enterprise Zones. And we are able with the zones to set aside designated areas and communities in which we can offer tax incentives for development. And that could be residential, commercial, industrial, various uses. One of the major purposes of zones is to help economic growth in depressed areas. And so this allows for an incentive to be offered for those projects. The various tax incentives for large projects can involve machinery and equipment tax exemptions and utility tax exemptions. There are also corporate deductions that can be taken as well. Locally, we have the sales tax exemption on building materials, and we have property tax abatements that are available. And I'll go into a few details on that in a couple slides. So recently, the Illinois State Act for Enterprise Zones was amended, and all zones existing will expire. They will no longer have any option for renewal, and we must compete for new enterprise zones as communities. So there's a map of enterprise zones in the state currently. The highest concentration is in the Chicago area, followed by a concentration near St. Louis, of course, in the Illinois side. And then Peoria has a concentration of zones in that area as well. There are 97 zones, and for new zones, for applications, the state will also be allowed to approve up to 97 new zones. But there's no precedent where if you've had a zone before, it doesn't mean that you'll get a new zone established. There are 10 criteria that the state has set up for these applications, that you must meet at least three. And of course, there's a lot of economic data that we'll provide in these applications that must be addressed. So out of those 97 zones, we have three located in Champagne County. We have a joint zone between the Champagne, City of Champagne, and Champagne County, where there are not only properties inside city limits, but there are properties that are separately in the county that are contiguous to the zone. And the tax abatement participation comes from the city, the county, and previously the Park District as well. The City of Champagne is the administrator, and the Champagne County Regional Planning Commission is the deputy administrator. And the zone expires in 2016. For the City of Urbana's zone currently, their properties are inside their city limits. And for tax abatements, they have both city and county participation, so the county's been a partner since the 80s on that. And the administrator is the city, and their zone expires next year. Rantoul also has a zone within their city limits, village limits. Their tax abatements come from the village and the school districts, and they administer their own zone. They don't expire until 2017, so in this first round of applications, which is this year, Champagne and Urbana need to apply, but Rantoul can wait till next year, and will be waiting till next year to apply in that phase of applications. So there's a map of both Champagne and Urbana zones, side by side, just an overview. In the past, in these existing zones, a lot of the focus was on, of course, the commercial corridors and redeveloping a lot of the business areas. Some of the areas that branch out were for specific projects that incentives were discussed and approved for, and other areas that were being redeveloped. So as I mentioned, the two local incentives that we offer through these zones, the sales tax exemption on building materials, for any materials that are permanently affixed to the property on a qualified enterprise zone project, those materials can be free from all sales tax in Illinois. And so as zone administrators, we coordinate with those contractors to get them certificates for that project, so that the suppliers can document and then exempt the sales tax. In the past couple of years, that requirement has been modified, so that we also work with the Department of Revenue. And before a certificate can be issued, the Department of Revenue will run a background check on these businesses. And if they have any unpaid taxes or any tax liens or situations, they will be delayed on getting any certificates until those situations are resolved. For property tax abatement, for any improved value on a project that's generated from development or redevelopment, we can abate those taxing partners who have agreed to participate. We can abate just their rate on the improved values tax that's generated. So the base tax and the base EAV stay the same and keep coming in as revenue, but then the increment resulting from the improvements is what we can abate that rate on. We work with the county clerk's office to file these abatements each year. And typically, depending on the project qualifications that each zone has, the abatements can be up to five to 10 years. So it's a temporary basis for the abatement. And just a side note, that wherever there's a property that's in a TIF district and an enterprise zone, they will not get the enterprise zone abatements. Their taxes are already allocated for the TIF district. So other incentives, like I mentioned, are for larger projects, large investments, and the companies work directly through the state and with their own accountants for those incentives. For the new zone applications for this year for establishment, we have a great opportunity. We have an opportunity to continue partnerships with the other governments here in the community. We have the ability to remap the boundaries, to include certain areas that need redeveloped. And we have the ability to include multiple taxing bodies on the tax abatements, so that those years that we abate the taxes could be decreased, because we have more partners on board. And like I mentioned earlier, this will be a competitive process. And the more community partnership and collaboration that we can demonstrate, the better for our applications. These applications are due by the end of this calendar year. And so the request tonight is for discussion of Champagne County's participation in both new Champagne and Urbana enterprise zones, for the county to be a joint partner in both of them. Depending on how the discussion goes and what other data might be needed, we would be able to return in November with establishing ordinances, resolutions, and intergovernmental agreements. So I will pass it along to TJ for the Champagne portion.
Good evening, and thank you so much for having us. I do want to start off by just simply saying thank you. For 30 years, the City of Champagne and Champagne County have been partners on what is one of our largest economic development tools that we have. It is the one tool that extends well beyond our small TIF districts. It covers large areas, and because of it, we've seen an incredible amount of reinvestment, new job growth, and additional tax revenue to all of us. So today, I'm going to walk you through briefly our proposed map. The state is, while they're making us go through this process, they are kind of doing us a favor. It gives us a chance to relook at this program from the top down. It involves a new map. We can look at the next 20 years and figure out where we might need tools to both grow employment, but also revitalize declining neighborhoods. And it also gives us a chance to take programs that were fairly blunt objects and really target them to specifically get the kind of growth that we want here in Champagne. So right now, there are six property tax programs on our books. You see them there, single-family, commercial, industrial, hotel conference center, planned development, and rehabilitation. Some of those are new. Everything, the original three were the single-family, commercial, and industrial, but they've grown based on some needs over the years. And you can see that the average, the average city abatement is about $350,000. The county's portion, because your tax rate is slightly lower, is slightly lower than that. But in turn, the construction value of those enterprise projects since 2002 is over $500 million, which is really remarkable. And also, in that same time, for every dollar that we've abated, it's returned $77 in construction value. So our proposed map, you see it there before you, there's a couple, it looks similar to our original map, but we've constricted in some areas and expanded in others. One area that we've removed actually is the Campus Town area. There's very little incentive that's needed there, unlike in the 1980s. We've done a good job, the area's done a good job to grow on its own, so we're proposing to remove that. Areas of growth include making sure that all of our industrial areas, Apollo, Clearview, the South Research Park, making sure that we're in a position to include those areas. We've also added, on the residential side, we've added Dobbins Downs at the request of the county. Wilbur Heights is also included, so both of those areas could take advantage of our programs. We've included Garden Hills, because our declining residential We've included Garden Hills, because our declining residential neighborhoods are a real emphasis for us with this program. And I'll show you in just a moment some of the programs we think we can use to address that. We've also included the areas, it would be the southwest area around Centennial Park. We know it is planning area 19, but both neighborhoods surrounding Centennial Park were built in the 60s, early 70s, and are starting to experience decline, and we want to make sure we stay out in front of it. So those are the areas. There's some small areas as well, but for the most part, the district looks somewhat similar to what it was before. So as we sat down to develop these new programs, we brought in representatives from all of our taxing districts, all of those who we hope to have as partners on the program. That includes Champaign County. That includes MTD, Parkland, Unit 4, and Champaign Park District. We had our own internal staff as well, the EDC was at those meetings. And we use these four program goals to drive the creation of our programs. Obviously, job growth, we want to make sure we stem the tide in declining commercial residential areas. We want to make sure the focus is on infill, which is a real point that you may be concerned about, in terms of how does this area go beyond our corporate boundaries. We're not really growing, we're not proposing any new areas, any new large areas outside of our corporate limits, because we feel very strongly that infill is where we need to be. And then next, lastly, just designing programs that we can measure and bring back to you and change over time, and so that our programs change with the times, unlike our past programs. So we have six new programs, and I want to walk you through those briefly. The first one is our Neighborhood Improvement Program. This is the one that's targeted specifically at some of our declining neighborhoods. We would offer a five-year property tax abatement on the increase from any improvement. Now, this program becomes a little complicated, because if you have a single-family house, the only way you're going to get your property, the property value is going to go up, is if you make a pretty sizable improvement to that home. But we don't want to preclude that, and we know that that's still a possibility. This program would then reward those that make that investment with the five-year abatement. It would be available to all single-family, both owner and rental-occupied. And on the property tax partners there, I've left them kind of shaded out. I hope to add those as we get affirmative votes from all of those taxing partners, but those are who we're asking to abate. And the city, of course, is already, would be a given here.
Mr. Blakeman, which of those taxing districts do you actually have onboard at this point?
No one has actually taken a vote to join, although, because we're not quite to that phase. Parkland will be voting tomorrow. All indications there are that they actually will come on. They're not maybe going to come on with every program. And taxing districts can choose which programs they want. If they don't like all of them, they could choose which ones they want to join. I think Parkland will take that, because their emphasis is really more in job growth and linking employment with some of the programs that they offer. So that's a nice nexus between them. Park District would be next. Again, from every indication is that they may not come on to all of them, but that they will participate at some level. MTD, we haven't, that is still a little ways out. And Unit 4 is also, we're still discussing things with them.
Ms. Petrie.
Point of clarification. On this property tax abatement for five years, if I do improvements on my property, I can get that improvement abated by myself. So what advantage is this to me as an individual owner?
Can you clarify that? What is the abatement that you're getting on the improvement?
The increase of value on the property, so I wouldn't be charged that. So if I do an improvement on my property, I can apply, and that can be abated for X number of years. Actually, I think, I wish the assessor were here to remind me, but I think it's even a longer period of time than five years.
Okay.
And since you are bringing in individual homes, I need to wrap my head around the advantage of this.
Okay. Well, aside from the property tax abatement, you would also get sales tax abatement, in this case. So you wouldn't pay sales tax on the materials to make that improvement, so you'd get both of those benefits by qualifying for the program.
Let's go ahead and move ahead and see if we can get through the Champaign portion of this. If you can pick up the pace a little bit. I think everybody's had access to these materials, so if you want to hit the highlights or things that you feel we may not have picked up from the packet, that'd be great.
Okay. Well, you know, my point was just to kind of run through the programs. I can run through these slides really quickly. The multi-family program, we actually, again, we have two tiers. One, if you offer affordable units, one if you don't. We feel multi-family, we want to make sure that we try and encourage affordable multi-family throughout the community, not just targeted in some very small, specific neighborhoods. The Commercial District Enhancement, that was a focus there, is looking at some of the commercial corridors, Country Fair Shopping Center, Mattis Avenue, Prospect and Bradley Avenue. Some of these areas where we aren't seeing any kind of much commercial reinvestment. We want to make sure we have tools in our toolbag to address that as well. We are also, for some of these, adding a bonus. If you do, if you are a minority or female-owned business, we'll add an additional year of And our employment program, you know, these ramp up, obviously, the amount of abatement as you move up the ladder. The employment would be the biggest one, but this is pretty much reserved for the really large employers, the corporate offices, the large manufacturing uses. And these abatements would vary based on your performance. So the number of new employees you create and the number of retained employees you create, we would, in return, give you a graduated abatement schedule. We also have one for historic structures and tourism development, but at that, I'll let Urbana take over.
And Ms. Petrie, anybody, any questions for Mr. Blakeman?
And I'm happy to, if you want to, if we want to answer questions all at once at the end, we can do that, or I can answer questions.
Either way, if you have something that's specific to this presentation, let's do it now. Go ahead, Ms. Petrie.
What kind of check and balance are both of these communities going to put in place to check that actually the employees that they say they are going to have are actually there, one-year, two-year, three-year? And then my second is, if both Champaign and Urbana could send me a map that overlays your tax increment finance districts and your enterprise zone, they're up on your website, but I can't mesh them together, because I want to see how that looks together. Thanks.
The point number one, there would be annual reporting. There already is an increased amount of annual reporting that the state requires due to some of the new rules that are in place. So there would be reporting during the entire abatement period. We don't have much of a stick after that abatement ends, in terms of guaranteeing those numbers beyond that point. But there would be an annual reporting, and we wouldn't turn the abatement in until we had those numbers to verify. And then the map, we can talk about getting that for you. Yep.
Thank you. Let's move on to Urbana.
My name's Libby Tyler. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Urbana, and I wanted to introduce the staff who'll be making the presentation. But just in terms of introductory remarks, we've had an enterprise zone for 30 years. It's been very successful. We really welcome the opportunity, though, to have a joint zone with Champaign County, so that the zone can grow with development in the community. And there's a lot of efficiencies that Champaign has been able to enjoy in working directly with the county on a joint enterprise zone. So we welcome that potential partnership. Also, Urbana is interested in continuing the commercial and industrial incentives that we've had in the area, as well as jump-starting our residential, our single-family and duplex residential. We are facing a real need to build our tax base in Urbana. We have quite a bit of tax-exempt land, and we really need to get some of these developments jump-started. So we have a special urgency, we feel, to rev up our economic development programs. So with me here tonight are Brandon Boyes, who is our Economic Development Manager, and Kate Ferrer, who's our Economic Development Specialist, and they will walk you through our proposed program.
Thanks, Libby. And in the interest of fairness, I did it to TJ, so I'm going to do it to you. The rate at which you went through those programs was great. I mean, if you could just give us a flavor of each of the programs. I think, as I said, I hope everybody's had a chance to read the packet that we were given, and I think the Finance Committee's interest is going to be more primarily economic as opposed to, you know, the specifics of the maps and the programs. So keep it at a high level, if you would, and go ahead.
Thank you. Before we go into the detail of the program, I'd like to just take a moment to go over some of the return on investment figures from our current enterprise zone, which we've had since 1985, so it's just about 30 years. This data comes from a more recent time. It starts in about 1999 and goes to present. Over $100 was spent on new construction for every dollar abated in the enterprise zone. And when I say every dollar, I mean abated jointly by the City of Urbana and Champaign County. And of that, the enterprise zone generated nearly $70 in equalized assessed value for every dollar abated. So in terms of the success of the enterprise zone, we really feel like the money we put into it was well-served, and we saw a lot of investment in construction during that time. These are just some general figures on the tax abatements. Over the last about 14 years, about $2.2 million was abated. The City of Urbana abated 1.4 million, and the county abated 800,000 during that time. And what we got for that was about $152 million in equalized assessed value. So we feel very strongly that the enterprise zone did its job in encouraging construction inside of the zone. And to that end, we saw about $266 million in construction, which makes up about 33% of the city's total, and in general, saw projects of higher value than those happening outside the enterprise zone. So we see more money being spent inside the enterprise zone. This is just a brief reminder of what our current zone looks like. It is within our corporate boundaries, but we project that the new boundary would hopefully extend somewhat outside of our boundaries and would focus on areas of projected growth over the next 20 years, especially commercial, industrial, and single-family residential. I can skip that slide. So this is a draft map that we are currently working on, which shows some of the area that might be contained inside of the new zone. And what you can see here is that it mainly still includes many of our commercial corridors. They have been fleshed out a bit to accommodate things that have grown since the 80s, areas of single-family residential in southeast Urbana, and areas of projected commercial and industrial growth in north Urbana. These are the taxing partners we have approached. Although the same as Champaign, we haven't actually had a vote yet, because we haven't reached that point. We have received enthusiastic response from our school district and other participating districts, and we hope to have them join us. Those votes will begin with Parkland tomorrow, and will go through the end of this month and probably into mid-November, while we meet with all of their staff and get that accomplished.
Mr. Kurtz, what is your deadline? I know it's, 2015 is when it expires. But isn't the deadline sometime in December?
The deadline for this application is December 31st.
Will you be able to meet that deadline?
Yes, absolutely. This is the proposed abatement schedule for projects. So what we have here is basically two projects, one for residential development and one for commercial and industrial development. We have set project minimums, so we are looking at new single-family or duplex construction that is at least $80,000, so that applies to new home construction, and new or expanding commercial and industrial projects of at least $100,000. We did go ahead and create three subprograms within the commercial and industrial to give a slightly larger abatement to those companies who are adding jobs in Champaign County, because we feel that is an important aspect of this program. The program's schedule is largely self-explanatory. I will point out that the schedule down here in small print, this is roughly equivalent to a three-year, 100% abatement, and then they climb to a four- and five-year, 100%. Again, with the abatement being only on the increment generated from a project, so if there is no project, there is nothing to abate. These I just went over. Just a little information on the types of jobs we would like to see created. We did put this in place with the anticipation that jobs would mean full-time jobs paying at least $10 an hour, where full-time means more than 35 hours per week. We anticipate, obviously, needing to adjust these numbers sometime in the future, as the enterprise zone would expand over 15 years, and obviously, we would hope minimum wage would rise during that time. This is just a brief example, showing that if no project were done, you would continue to receive the same tax amount on the property indefinitely, whereas if a project were created, you would see in the initial years, the increment, which is shown in blue on the lower half of the scale there, is what is being abated, and the gray on top is what is being received by the taxing body. So in the first year, you're still receiving the pre-project tax from that project, and then as you approach the sixth year, you begin to recoup the abated monies as well. And then obviously, beyond the sixth year, you just have a higher taxing value overall. This chart explains basically the same thing, but with different numbers. Had the project not occurred, you would still be getting tax revenue, but not as much, whereas with a project, you're looking at more than double the tax revenues. And again, I would like to emphasize that this is, the abatements are only on the increment, and you cannot receive an enterprise zone abatement in a TIF district. And with that, I will turn it over for questions.
Any questions specific to the Urbana part of this proposal? Mr. Quisenberry.
Yeah, two questions. First of all, was the old Build Urbana program underneath this enterprise zone previously?
The Build Urbana program was separate from the enterprise zone. It was actually a rebate program, whereas this is strictly a abatement.
This looked familiar, but it's a different mechanism.
It is a different program.
And then I noticed on the map, which I don't see in the packet, I don't see the new zone. Okay. I'm curious about the green spot, the green square, kind of south and east of the intersection of 130 and Windsor there. I know in the Champaign proposal, they talked about preventing sprawl, or I heard it that way, but it said focusing on infill. But that looks to me like pushing out. Am I missing something there?
What square are you talking about?
That square. Is that really a target for, like, residential or commercial growth at this point?
This map is intended to cover the enterprise zone for 15 or more years. So certainly, we don't expect that growth necessarily to happen this year or next. We made this map more inclusive, with the intention of having it available if growth should reach that area.
Okay, well, I mean, there's plenty of open space still west of High Cross and in the areas between, like, Myra Ridge and the old, the Pell Track, which I know is not a part of the city yet, but in the long term, that would be an expectation.
I just wanted to add, we developed this map based on our comprehensive plan and the LRMP and sewer limit lines and zoning. So, and we didn't want to go too far out beyond the city, because it is a limited time horizon, but we did want to include whole parcels and not split parcels. So the corner that you mentioned is shown on our comprehensive plan for commercial development, but it's just half of the parcel, so we didn't split it. And it is, it's a little larger, probably about twice as big in that corner than shown on the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so do you have a mechanism to ensure that the extents of this don't get reached before the infill opportunities are filled in? For lack of a better way to say it.
I think all of our policies militate towards infill in Urbana with our TIF districts and development opportunities, but we want to have a balance of new growth as well. We've always had plans that have emphasized compact contiguous growth. When we look out over 20 years, we do hope to see development along High Cross Road and along Olympian. And we also expect to see continued infill development. That's really where the bulk of our efforts lie.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Michaels.
I guess I have some similar questions, but on the north side of that, it looks to me like that enterprise zone, if I'm not mistaken, is taking in Olympia to 45, and that's a lot of out of the city limits. And also, once again, we did not get this map in here, so that would be nice to have. Is that right, 45?
Yes, but that includes is the Olympian right-of-way to 45 and the industrial lands that are shown in that area. If you look on the city's zoning map and comprehensive plan map, we have heavy industrial lands along North Lincoln and the railroad right-of-way, and then along Frasca, we have a lot of light industrial office. So it includes those, and then along- So, it includes those, and then along Cunningham, we have commercial. Now, there is residential and farmland in between, and those likely would not participate into the, in the enterprise zone.
Okay. Follow-up, please. Approximately what part of that is being added from what is existing now that you're talking about? Because that, I mean, look at that green area up there, and I know part of that is in the city. That just looks like a lot of ground being covered.
We do have large acreages up there. If you look on the map, the blue line is our city limit, and that, the enterprise zone goes up to that blue line. So, it does go very far up, the railroad on the west, Lincoln Avenue corridor with the industrial uses, and then the next area east of that is Frasca Field. So, this would simply go beyond the city limits to the Olympia right-of-way and one parcel north, expecting that we would see commercial-industrial development over the next 20 years along that road. So, it's a long-term plan.
Libby, is it a requirement that you have county participation for the enterprise zone to extend outside the city boundary? If the county doesn't participate, can the city designate areas outside the city limits?
Yes, and so, these areas could include development that would not be annexed, but that the county might choose to apply its enterprise zone. And that's why we thought it was so important to look at the zoning, look at the county's LRMP, look at the sewer. So, some of these areas could just be development that benefits the county until the city boundaries get up that far, or they need their sewer attachment.
Let me ask the question in a different way. If the city were not to receive county participation in this project, would the map that you submitted for the enterprise zone be able to incorporate areas outside the city, or would you be limited to the city limits?
Just the city, and the amendment process has gotten very tough. So, if somebody wants to partake of enterprise zone and amend into the city's enterprise zone, it takes about six months now. You need a shovel-ready project. Champaign, by working with the county, did not need to go through the amendment process. So, that's why we are looking for a joint zone that both governments can enjoy and not go through the amendment. By the time you get a property amended, they could very well be in the next community or Indiana or somewhere else. So, we want to be ready, have the tools available to us.
Okay, thank you. If there are, are there any other questions? If not, sorry, Mr. Kibler.
I just had a brief question for both Champaign and Urbana. Since we've been in this partnership for 20, 30 years, have there been any sort of feedback or questionnaires or whatnot that indicated that the reason why they built or expanded was directly due to an enterprise zone versus groups that are strictly taking advantage that the enterprise zone exists? Meaning that, were they going to do it anyways, or were they doing it because the enterprise zone existed?
I think there's many other folks who could respond, but I do believe the enterprise zone is an expectation for commercial-industrial development. That's a first question that they ask, and I'm sure that Bruce or Craig or the others could give you specific examples of that, so. It's a bar that's expected for commercial-industrial siting throughout the country and certainly in this area. If you don't have enterprise zone, then pretty much they don't proceed, so.
Mr. Blakeman, do you want to add to that?
Well, I would just echo what Libby said, is that this is, you know, the program is really in similar to TIF. It's a but-for argument, right? And so, what we're trying to do with the new programs is tailor them and be so specific that we are getting the kind of developments that we want in those areas. I think what Libby said is exactly right. When it comes to development in, for us, in Apollo, or the Interstate Research Park, or Madison Commercial Park, you know, those companies who are looking to locate and encapsing their net wide, that is the first question they ask because it's the most-used economic development tool in the state. And every state, for the most part, has enterprise zones. So, without it, it just becomes, it's the first box that's not checked.
So, just a follow-up, just so I understand, actually, why I'm asking the question is that it stated that we're, $100 is generated for every $1 lost from a taxing perspective, but I was trying to gauge how much of that $100 was really lost, or how much is it, it seemed to be encapsulating everybody, if you're going to do it or not, you're part of that $100, so. But the second part that you just answered, I think, answered my question, if I can say it succinctly. If we do not have enterprise zones, that's the first box that's checked, we will not get development, or should not expect to get development in that areas. Is that what you're saying?
I would say that's true, and I think that's specifically true with some of the largest employers and the, you know, the large, especially when you get into the industrial and the larger commercial and office uses. That is, we may still get redevelopments and rehabs and some of the infill, but I think that we would really lose out when it came to competing for a new FedEx distribution center, right? That's a direct project that used the program. Look up in Apollo, and it's full of them.
Thank you.
Mr. Richards?
Mr. Blakeman might have kind of answered this, but since the last time we heard from the city of Champaign on this, the city of Champaign said 23 years of failure from the west Urbana district was why we had to continue that TIF district and continue taking money from schoolchildren to give to the city. I would like to hear the city of Champaign and the city of Urbana each name some specific projects that would not have come if we didn't have these enterprise zones. I don't want to hear economic development platitudes about why we need to continue this corporate welfare. I want to hear some real projects. I want to hear some real reasons, not some, oh, we think this project might not have come. I want to hear some real successes before we decide we want to continue this.
Well, I am not, I can, I am happy to provide you with a list that has every single project that's come into the city of Champaign through enterprise zones since the 1980s. We have that list. We have some basic data about that. What you're asking is almost an impossible task for someone to say, ask any business, why are you locating here? They may give you a number of reasons. I don't know that I can answer your question.
Does Urbana want to take a stab at that, since it was such a good question? And then, we'll go to Mr. Harkey.
Kate, why don't you? There you go. Just because there may be other questions.
I will interrupt and add, as you're changing seats there, I understand Mr. Richards' point. I mean, I almost said this when you presented the, you know, most of the growth has happened in the enterprise zone. I mean, you're, that's sort of a totality, right? Because you've drawn the enterprise zone around the areas where you expect the growth to happen. So, I think it's reasonable to look to, you know, what evidence you can provide, whether it's, you know, indications from the developers or from the corporations that have relocated, or, you know, credible opinions from city staff that these people would not, as you say, it's the but-for argument, right? To what extent can we, can we put some numbers and some actual company names behind the but-for argument?
And I do think it's a good question, almost impossible to answer, although some folks have studied this type of thing. In Urbana, just off the top of my head, just thinking about the northern part of the city, Frasca has, their enterprise has used enterprise zone. Creative Thermal Solutions, which is a small research park on Willow Road, has used the enterprise zone. Soccer Planet, a little different type of use, recreational use, has used the enterprise zone. Super Value. Many of our employers have used the enterprise zone. I think the sales tax abatement is more widely used than the job creation incentives. So, I would say most of our significant commercial-industrial development has employed the enterprise zone. To answer your question, would they have come, would they have done what they did otherwise if there wasn't an enterprise zone? I think you would almost need to conduct an experiment. You know, let's have a community without an enterprise zone for five years. You could do the same with TIF, and then let's have the very same type of community with for five years and see what kind of growth has happened. Do you want to be the community that gets the placebo? Because I don't think it would be as healthy. Of course, there would be some development, but without conducting an experiment like that, we can't say. What we can say is what people ask for, what their requests are when we negotiate development agreements, and we know how difficult it is to land a development, how important the enterprise zone is. So, those are more qualitative factors. It is a very commonly-used economic development tool, and again, if nobody had the tools, then, well, I guess, you know, it would be more of a level playing field. But we have the tools, and we want to be able to use them. We want to succeed economically.
If I could just add, and I think that, from the city of Champaign's standpoint, the major employers is primarily where we would point to and say, you know, but for the enterprise zone, we probably wouldn't have gotten them. Gil Athletics, a great example. We are competing for them to merge their company somewhere else or come here. Enterprise zone was a key factor in their decision. We've, there's a number of businesses up in Apollo subdivision. The Yahoo agreement, most recently, in the research park, you know, enterprise zone played a key role, in addition to other incentives that the city's directly providing. I think the, you know, one of the things that TJ mentioned in his presentation is the programs we have right now are sort of blunt instruments. They're all-or-nothing kinds of programs. And what we tried to do in terms of honing the programs for the future is to really make them more targeted and easier to measure and keep track of whether they're really working, and then adjust them over time. So, I think, I would acknowledge that there are, I'm sure, projects that have happened in the enterprise zone that would have happened whether the zone was there or not. We're trying to tighten the programs to make that less the case going forward than it has been in the past.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Harkey, and then Mr. Kurtz, then I'm going to try to get a motion on the floor, I guess Ms. Burksen wants in first. So, Mr. Harkey.
Yeah, you guys kind of made the point I was going to make. The problem is with these things is that the genie is out of the bottle. And I, you know, when we compare it to, like, say, Vermillion County, are they going to pull a big new business in versus Champaign County? They have the district and we don't. That just gives more chance that Vermillion County's going to get it. And I think they're exactly right when we're talking large industrial, big shops that are looking even nationwide for locations. You know, we have to have this. You know, I would hate to be the one that voted to, you know, things are really growing again in Champaign or Urbana, and I'd hate to be the one to douse the fire because we ended this zone. And that's the problem, is that once they're started, they're hard to end because you're going to have people no longer invest and switch to other communities that are going to keep them. It's a bit of a catch-22, but I prefer to side on the idea of increasing the jobs in this community because there are revenues that come through that, through the housing that people live in, through the property, through the, excuse me, the sales taxes they pay, and income taxes, et cetera. So, while I have a lot of the same concerns that Mr. Richards has, I think that we're already past the point where we can cancel this.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz.
I think Josh was in my brain here a second ago. I've been a businessman here for a long time. I had a business on campus for 11 years, I had 125 employees working for me. And I can tell you, right now, as a businessman, if I had a choice between having my taxes abated versus Peoria or others that have enterprise zones, I'd be looking hard at where I could save the bottom line for my construction and build a business. It's a reality of life that enterprise zones are important, and it's a reality of life that it's a competitive type of tool that we need to have to compete with other jurisdictions that would possibly take 50 or 100 or 150 jobs away from us, which could be millions of dollars in income to our community. So, I'm in support of enterprise zones, as stated.
Thank you all, Ms. Burksen. And let's try to keep with questions to the presenters here if we can.
It seems that the map of the Urbana enterprise zone is at least half, maybe more than half, outside of Urbana, which means you're, the city is subsidizing people to build outside the city at the expense of the people in the city, which is, it seems to be a recipe for urban sprawl and urban decay. And it's not just the idea of an enterprise zone. We're talking about voting for a particular map, and I find that map really unacceptable.
Again, it's a 20-year map that follows our comprehensive plan and some, and the county's LRMP, so some of that development may be in the county, but part of our joint zone.
And only abated by the county.
And in that case, it would only be abated by the county. Also, just in terms of these tables, we're looking for a quick punch effect, 100% abatement one year, get you in the door, and it goes down. The second year, the taxing districts realize this. And this is something the school district is really supportive of.
Ms. Schwartz, and then Mr. Langenhaim.
I have a question. You were talking about, I heard two numbers, $77 for each one and so on, but you're talking about construction dollars versus tax. Can you tell me how many tax dollars came back? And also, once the abatement is over, what's on average, I mean, how many of these businesses actually stay and continue to pay taxes, property taxes?
The actual taxing value is difficult to estimate because of the changing tax rates and the various jurisdictions, so I'm not able to recreate that data.
Yeah, but I'm giving up tax dollars. I would like to know how many I'm getting back. I mean, I understand there is also, I'm not trying to minimize the effect. I understand there are jobs, there is other things, but I'm trying to figure out tax for tax.
Yeah, so generally speaking, obviously, we tax on what's a third of market value. Historically, what companies report as their construction value is based, is for building permit basis, and they actually under-report or underestimate. So, our experience has been that the market value oftentimes is actually higher than the construction value that gets reported, and then a third of that is the assessed valuation that's the basis for taxing on those properties. So, you know, I think that what you look at, if you say that for every dollar invested, it created this much investment in construction value, is a pretty good indicator that that's at least equal to or greater than the property tax value that subsequently results.
Mr. Langenhaim.
So, you're saying it's possible that we're only breaking even from a taxing, property tax only. I understand the good job creation, I understand the other stories.
Well, no, I think we come out ahead because you only abate for a short period of time, and then that value remains as taxable value. I can say from our standpoint, and I think this is true from what I've seen for Urbana, is that we haven't seen companies come in, stay for five years, or even 10 years' worth of abatement, and then up and move out of the community. We haven't been that kind of community. We've been very stable when we've attracted employers and have managed to keep them for an extended period of time. So, I think that's a long-term gain for the community.
Mr. Langenhaim.
It sounds like everybody's... Sounds like everybody's got an enterprise zone, and they're all doing the same things. Maybe we should put some of our outstanding brainpower around here to figure out some other maneuver.
Thank you, Mr. Langenhaim. Just to make clear here, we're not, I mean, what we are being asked to do as a committee is essentially to consider this, and I think we'll have a chance to, the time that the real discussion here is going to happen is when this is brought back in the form of an actual program that we can participate in. At that point, I hope we'll have more of an idea who else is interested in participating because, to me, it makes a big difference to me in terms of getting the county to invest in this when we see other taxing districts investing in this. I think Mr. Mitchell was next, and then, did I see Ms. Petrie-Bales for round one? Okay, so we'll go to Mr. Mitchell for round one, and then we'll go back to Ms. Petrie and Mr. Kibler.
We've talked about 20-year map. How long is your map good for, and just kind of projections into the future?
Well, the life of the enterprise zone is essentially 20 years. Over time, I think both communities have amended the maps at times, but as Libby noted, that's a time-consuming process. So, if you're in the heat of trying to attract a company that is competing for various sites, you know, you say, well, six months, we can have the enterprise zone. That's probably a deal killer. But as we see development patterns change or new growth areas appear, you know, we can certainly then take the time to do map amendments as necessary to reflect those.
Thank you. I'll go with Stan, who wants to jump in for round one, then we'll go to Patsy and Jeff.
Well, I was never a big fan of all the tax abatement stuff, but I must say that Rantoul has benefited greatly by the industrial park, and even with Bell Sports coming there. And you're right, I mean, that's one thing they look at, and they check that box, and if it's not there, believe you me, in today's market, they're going to go somewhere else where the best ill can be had. I think it's somewhat of a disservice to people that's been in the community forever due to the tax abatements and what have you, but everything in life... the community forever due to the tax abatements and what have you. But everything in life has a downside. But you've also gotta look at the long run and the benefits it brings, the people it brings, and all the other things that happen over a course of time. And I would have to agree with these gentlemen. I have yet to see a business in Rantoul pull up its building and say, we're out of here. I mean, they may have cut back, they may have, but that a lot has to do with the economy. So, in a way, I favor it. But there's a lot of good questions here, and we'll find out.
I have several questions and comments. Many of you know, because we're fellow planners, that I did my master's thesis on this very topic. And the result of that research is that unless you're East Peoria or East St. Louis, you really don't get back the money that's been put in for all of these incentives. And over the years since these programs have been put in place by the state and across the country, more and more, the expansion of how it's used is really the troubling issue. And as I, as best as I could look at the maps on your websites, there are several things that concern me, and that's one of the reasons I asked for the overlay maps. Because if I just take and look at it visually, almost all of both of the cities are either enterprise zone, tax increment, finance districts are overlapping as best as I can judge. And that takes a whole chunk of money out of the various taxing bodies, even if it's by choice on the enterprise zone, where it isn't the case on the tax increment, finance districts. And when I look at the Champaign map, I could argue for Wilbur Heights without any question. Dobbins Down and Garden Hills are part of my district. I walk it. I don't think I could quite argue for that to be in the enterprise zone and some of the other areas, definitely not, because those areas are already developing, and development is going to come there. I can't speak as strongly for Urbana because I don't, I don't walk those districts as much as I do my own. So, my bottom line is, I look at the boundary lines on these districts that you are proposing. I do understand the argument now with the change of the law, how difficult it is to amend the map. But I think Ms. Burks, he has an extremely good point in that the boundaries that are set forth, even though the philosophy and the principle is infill by both communities, those boundaries alone are going to cause sprawl. And basing the argument, the genie is out of the bottle. Everybody uses this. It's like athletes on hormones. If an athlete says, I'm not going to use hormones, and I go play against, you know, somebody who's stoked on hormones, you're gonna get killed. And that's, that's what's happening with all of these incentive programs. So, how do we handle this? We handle it by really bringing the boundaries in, really focusing them on where the target needs to be, and think other ways, as Mr. Langenheimer pointed out. There are many other incentive ways to do economic development that does not take away for a period of time from the other taxing bodies. And I would really, really encourage both Champaign and Bana to go back a little bit to the drawing board and do a little bit of adjusting, because right now, I have trouble coming on board for more enterprise zones and expanding them as proposed.
Good comments, Patsy. Who was next? Mr. Kibler, sorry. I'm losing my memory up here.
No worries. So, in response to one of the statements that was made about comparative places and trying to make them equal, and I understand the premise behind that, I guess my thought is if we had some data that said that these particular companies or this particular, 50% have identified that enterprise zones was absolutely critical for this, and not even just the enterprise zone itself, but the subprojects that are within them, that if somebody get an added addition to their house because of an enterprise zone, maybe, maybe not. I just don't have any of that information. And I'm hoping and leaning on the agencies that are leading the charge, that over the past 25 years, if that data is available, whether it's surveys that were done, even if it's rudimentary at best, that would give us guidance as to whether or not that program was fruitful, something we should get behind. But right now, I don't see that. And if you have that, that would be very helpful.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for our presenter, Ms. Michaels?
Just kind of going back on what Mr. Quisenberry said, or parts of it, is that I really would like to see those boundaries tightened up also. There are a lot of places in, inside the limits or inside those areas maybe to increase that versus starting to spread out a little further on those. I particularly have the situation with the north, north end reaching up to Olympia and over to 45. And I'll just be straightforward about that. I think that's way far stretching when there's other things that probably could be developed a little bit closer to, you know, to the highways and things of that nature. So, that's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Michaels. Mr. Maguire.
I guess I'm first, I'm surprised that Urbana has a more liberal growth policy than Champaign does. But actually, I appreciate that. And after those comments, I kind of think that it's important to fill infill, especially if it needs to be filled. But we also hopefully in the next 20 years expect to grow and grow our tax base and grow the opportunity for jobs in Champaign or Bana. So, I would think that you'd want this plan to be able to include an area that we would want growth in. And in Urbana, obviously, they want to see that happen. And so, I think I would support that plan. Thank you.
Could I respond to that?
Absolutely. I'd just like to emphasize that the inclusion of property in an enterprise zone doesn't guarantee development, and it also doesn't guarantee annexation. I think that a rather small portion of Champaign's county portion of the zone was annexed. There was large, large portions that were never annexed. Our intent in including large areas that are potentially developable is to present that as an option. Now, there are a number of ingredients that add together. And the presence of an enterprise zone or another incentive district is one thing that contributes towards development, the willingness of the property owner zoning, the presence of infrastructure. And we know a lot of these sites don't have some of those ingredients and are unlikely to face development. So, our goal is to present options in those areas, not to designate or indicate where growth will or should occur.
Yeah, a couple of comments follow up with that. First of all, in terms of the programs that are targeted to declining residential areas, Garden Hills, for example, we are seeing significant disinvestment in that neighborhood. We have property maintenance cases that arise on a regular basis. Will somebody necessarily invest in their home just because of the enterprise zone? Probably not. But if we can reward them for investing in that area when others aren't, then I think that's a worthwhile endeavor with the enterprise zone. Secondly, when it comes to TIF districts, we are seeing TIF districts expire in this community. Our downtown TIF district will expire in 2017. It can't be extended again. Our East University Avenue TIF district expires in 2022. It can't be extended again. We will have no tools in those areas once those expire. And I can tell you from experience that it is more expensive and more difficult to build in an area like that than it is to scrape a cornfield and build there. And so, when we disincent the areas that are more difficult and more expensive to build in, we incent them to go out and sprawl. The third thing I'd say in terms of the maps is that our map reflects area that is inside of the contiguous area growth boundary that was established as part of the Land Resource Management Plan and designated in our comprehensive plan for future growth. Our comprehensive plan is about infill development, but it does recognize that there will be some fringe growth. We've contained it. We didn't add great new, big growth areas to the most recent comprehensive plan. But our map's reflective of that, and I think Brandon's correct in saying that the enterprise zone is there for the time that it does develop, not to create development ahead of the time that it should occur there. So, I think, you know, those are all considerations that went into our programs and our map.
Thank you. If there are no other comments or questions for the presenter, I'm gonna ask that the Finance Committee just do a show of hands here. Anybody who feels that this is, they are interested enough in this proposal that it's worth bringing it back to us in November as additional taxing districts take an interest in this. I'd like to get a show of hands for people who'd like to see us come back in November. Okay, that seems like pretty strong support. I think we look forward to following this as it moves forward. And definitely, the extent to which you can address specific members' questions would be appreciated. And especially, make sure that you keep a surprise as you get out there talking to the other taxing districts. So, I'd like to thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
And with the chair's indulgence, I'd like to take a five-minute recess. Yeah.
Five-minute break. All right, let's, let's be seated, please. Like, let's continue this, our meeting. Thank you. Let's go, gentlemen. Thank you.
Okay, folks, let's continue with our finance agenda. The second item is a presentation and a request from the court-appointed Special Advocates Program of Champaign County. Mr. Accord.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come back and talk about CASA a little bit. In the interest of time, I know you've had our information in our packets. I just wanted to hit some key points. We're proud to say that we've celebrated 20 years now of advocating for abused and neglected kids in Champaign County. As of today, we serve over 400 children in the court system. There's about 425 abused and neglected kids in the court system today. You know, this fee that we're asking for today was really the work of Illinois CASA, helping the CASA programs be able to access some additional funding. CASA organizations in Illinois are one of only seven in the country that are not funded by their state legislature. So, this is an opportunity that Illinois CASA helped pass this. Currently, 14 counties have passed this in Illinois. I can assure you that we have extensive oversight from the Illinois CASA program, National CASA Association, the United Way. So, we have extensive reporting requirements. We have to meet for funding from several of our agencies. Over the course of the last year especially, the last year to 18 months, our workload is greatly increased because of the severity of the cases that we're seeing and the requirements that the courts are putting on us to give them accurate information from both of our advocates and legal representatives, legal attorneys. So, we have added staff and a half in the last six months in our organization. I can tell you that I'm quite confident in telling you that's not our last expansion that's gonna be required over the course of the next couple of years. So, this is just an opportunity to come to you to talk about a possible fee imposed on offenders of certain convictions in Champaign County. We're not asking for anything out of the county budget, nor does it affect the citizens of Champaign County other than offenders in the court system. We have, you know, this fee was passed over a year ago at the state legislature, and we're choosing to come to you at this point because, as I said, of our increased workload, our increased staff requirements and what we see in the future. We're trying to be proactive to be able to sustain our quality of service that we deliver for many, many years to come. So, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about that and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Accord? I'll go with Mr. Kurtz and Ms. Petrie, and then Mr. James.
I noticed that, first, I want to tell you that there's, in my mind, there's nothing worse than an abuser of children. They're innocent. They don't have any recourse in many ways.
Sorry, is there a question here? You can hold it for discussion.
I'm gonna ask a question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We're trying to, we're trying to convince the board that a fee is important here. I noticed that in the packet, the fees range from like $10 to $30 in all of the different jurisdictions around Champaign. I was, I wanted to ask, and I think I have in my mind a number, the $20 number. From your board, what was the consensus? Was there, just wanted to throw it open to us, or that you have a recommendation on the fee itself?
Our consensus would be a $20 fee would be impactful on the budget to be able to help us sustain our levels of service for an extended period of time. As you said, the ranges from county to county have varied from the bottom to the top. And the estimates that the clerk gave us on collectible, possible collectible fees on $20 would have a significant impact on what we're trying to do. One of the other things that I pointed out in the packet was we are recipient of our Penn State funding that we know is gonna run out. It's not often that we know funding, particularly grants, are gonna run out. We know this is going to run out. And again, we're trying to be proactive in helping to sustain the services we put in place.
Hi, nice to see you again, and your colleague in the back. It would help me tremendously in trying to make a responsible decision on the amount of the fee to be useful and helpful to you all. If you could provide us, even though your board has made a recommendation, provide us a budget so that we could see how that fee would help. And maybe, you know, one, two, three years, just so we have a little bit of projection. You indicated that you might be needing to add more staff, add that in, into it. And then, from what I read in our provided information, it appears just crudely that about what actually gets collected is about 50% of X amount that is actually fined. And so, putting that into what you give us, and I'm not speaking for my colleagues here on the board, but for me personally, that would be a terrific help. Thank you very much.
I've got a few questions, and Patsy hit on one. I know the county raised their fees, and overall, the collection on them was pretty bad. So, what Patsy was alluding to there was another factor. Grant money, in my mind, I tell everybody, grant money is gonna run out. It's a grant. And when organizations start counting on that money to offset their budgets, I think they're doing a disservice to their staff and to themselves. That money should be allocated to whatever special needs they need at the time. Most of your staff, other than your office staff, is volunteer workers, correct?
Right.
So, they receive no stipend, serve mileage, or anything?
Correct. We do have a small mileage line item in our budget that does not last very long at all. Most of our advocates don't ask for anything.
And then, this state statute, they're good at always passing, you know, everybody down, and it gets nerve-wracking. But this would be on like traffic tickets, misdemeanor crimes, that it would add to the cost for that person, correct?
Correct. Convictions of certain crimes, right.
And we know for a fact that there are people that already have a hard time paying whatever levy, because they're the ones that are needing services in some cases to begin with. So, to me, it sounds like a good theory that this would be the way to go. And also, you guys, that your organization, excuse me, is a not-for-profit.
Correct.
Okay. I don't like the idea that government sometimes has the authority, and we can call it a fee, but it's a tax. And those of us, like me, if I don't wear my seatbelt sometimes, which I do, I wear it all the time. But if I didn't, I'm gonna go to court, and I'm being charged a fee, which I have to pay, even though in my mind it's a tax, to an organization, whether it be yours or someone else's, and don't take this wrong, that I may not support wholeheartedly when I'm out in public wanting to give donations. So, I think we open a can of worms there, and I think that isn't what government should be about. Taxes should be about the things that government has set up for, you know, and you, I'm not gonna sing to the choir. So, there's some of the issues I have with it. So, notoriously, you're gonna hear me say no to something unless it's really, and we can all sit here and say how great it is and how worthwhile it is. But when I hear people say, well, you know, this grant money's running out, we all live within budgets. When I go home, I don't have the authority to tell my kids, I'm gonna take half of your money back because dad needs it for gas, or dad needs it for beer, or whatever the case may be. I have to live within my means. So, I guess with volunteers and the way you're going and seeking grants would be the way I would ask you to continue, because I don't think it's fair to put it on the taxpayers at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Schwartz?
I'm a really strong supporter of the program. I'm just not sure I follow the logic of why ask to have people who are accused of, or convicted of burglaries, traffic, DUIs, and so. Why should they pay? Why shouldn't I pay? Why, why wouldn't, I mean, what's the, other than it's easy and we don't need a referendum on that, why have them pay for this very worthy cause and not have it to, I don't know, anybody who sells a house and put $10 more dollars on their transaction?
I understand your question. I think that, you know, one of the things that I would answer to, and, you know, again, I'm a very strong advocate of abused and neglected kids. And were it not for a program like us, I can assure you there'd be many, many children who'd be lost in the system. We're involved in these cases for many years on occasions. occasions. And so any opportunity that we have to try to solidify our program, and the legislature's given us a tool to do that, we're gonna try to take advantage of that. You know, I understand what you're saying about that. I feel like we're obligated to help take care of these kids. And unfortunately, many times, funding can get in the way of that and help, you know, help hinder some of the things that we can and cannot do. And our CASA organization has, for many years, has attempted to get the legislature to pass a budgetary line item for us. That's just not gonna happen. We know that's not gonna happen. And so, you know, we fundraise over 50% of our budget every year. Our fundraising is extremely competitive here. This is a very generous community. But unfortunately, the number of abused and neglected kids in this county is very high. And it's something that continues to stay steady and increase in some occasions. And so, you know, from our organization's standpoint, we're obligated to help take care of these kids and to speak up for their best interests and make sure that they're served as well as they possibly can.
Thank you. I was just gonna note from the language of the statute here, it appears that this fine fee is collected, tax, is collected only on cases for which there's a court appearance required. So simple traffic tickets cannot be covered.
Correct.
Okay. Go to Mr. Kibler and then Mr. Hartke.
Thank you, Mr. Record, for coming in today. Very worthwhile program. One of the concerns that I have on this request is that, and I'm looking to Deb for some great guidance here, I don't think that currently the county, with the exception of non-for-profits that we have a board stake in, so the CVB, the Economic Development Corporation, or boards that are directly under our jurisdiction, which are the Mental Health Board, Development of Disabilities Board, I don't think there's any other organization that we have taken money out of someplace and given it to that specific non-for-profit. And if that's the case, I think we do open up a little bit, I'm not trying to use the slippery slope argument, but we do open ourselves up for other requests of this nature in the event that that were to occur. So I'm looking at Deb, do you know of any groups, non-for-profits that we do not have some board control over or budgetary control over that would give us a, what's the word I'm looking for, precedence in this case?
No, but the legislature did that. I mean, the legislature gave you the authority to, you know, set this fee for this particular entity. And the legislature hasn't given you that authority to set a similar fee for any other not-for-profit that I'm aware of.
I would, I would jump in and note that, I assume everybody understands the difference, but CASA is not the same entity as the Children's Advocacy Center. They are also included in the same statute that enables us to collect a fee for CASA. And there has been, there was a presentation several months ago where the CAC indicated that they might be seeking a similar source of funding as did the parties responsible for the Youth Assessment Center. So there are some sort of quasi-governmental or non-governmental organizations that were anticipated in this ordinance. But as far as I know, we're not currently funding any of them. Mr. Hartke?
Yeah, I think you kind of answered. I wanted to be clear. This would be applied to both felonies and misdemeanors that require court appearance. Okay.
Yeah, it says, again, I'm not an attorney, thank God, but it says $10 to $30 to be paid by the defendant on a judgment of guilty or grant of supervision for a felony, class A, B, or C misdemeanor, petty offense, and business offense where a court appearance is required.
Can we whittle that down to make it strictly felony, or does it have to go with whatever the?
I don't know. I just said I'm not aware. That's a question, that's a question that could be directed to the state's attorney, I think. We can find out. Ms. Petrie?
Another clarification, sort of building on Mr. Hartke and your comment. Also, the statute says that the other two entities can come forward and ask for a fee. As you're looking at the statute there, could you give us an idea of what each of those two entities could be asking for, or the range that they could potentially ask for?
Yeah, without having done any research, take this with a grain of salt, but it looks like five bucks for peer court, peer jury, youth court, or other youth diversion program, which I'm guessing is what the YAC would be operating under. And, hold on, we're looking for the other part. Five to 30 for the Children's Advocacy Center. I don't, Deb, do you remember, am I correct with the Youth Assessment Center? Do you remember from their presentation what their?
I think all Julie was doing was making you aware that these fees existed. I don't think.
Well, I know, but do you remember what their dollar range was for the, was the Youth Assessment Center the $5?
I thought it was five to 30 for all three.
Okay. I could be wrong. We will certainly figure that out. That's a good question. You don't know, do you, Rush?
No, I know. I believe ours is 10 to 30.
10 to 30, yeah. And it looks, it's pretty clear. It looks like the Children's Advocacy Center is 5 to 30. But it's a little, it was a little less clear what part of the statute the Youth Assessment Center had followed.
Right. I also, too, if I could, wanted to point out that CASA organizations are actually created by state statute as well. So we are, in order to have a CASA program, you have to be accepted into the court system by your judiciary. And that the state statute provides our volunteers with absolute immunity while they're working for the CASA organization. So there's a statute that provides for court-appointed special advocates.
And you're answerable to the judges then essentially? Who has the ultimate oversight over the?
Well, ultimately, being a nonprofit, our board does. But yes, we have extensive oversight by the court, you know, of the expectation of what information we provide to them. So I would say on the legal side, it would be the court, and on the financial side would be multiple funders.
Okay. Anybody else for round one? Then we'll go to Stan.
I guess I would just ask, it would also be helpful for this board to have the information of what an average ticket is, or when you go to court and what the add-on fees are, because I know back when I used to go and file different things, you got storage fees, you got this fee, you got sheriff's fee, you got, pretty soon the fees will be a lot more than what you're ever gonna get when you go to court. So I think we need that knowledge, because we always hear 10 bucks, 20 bucks, or what have you. But in the scheme of things, that becomes a large number for someone that, as I said earlier, is in there and they don't have the money to begin with. So we need to take that into consideration.
Deb, can we take a look at that? Thank you, Mr. Kurtz.
I think also Stan, in the cases of that situation, the court has waived fees in other cases when they don't have the money. Deb, is that, would that apply? Do we know if that would apply here?
Yeah, I mean, the judges waive fees all the time depending on, right? I know, but they'll, okay, we'll look into that. We'll look into that. My understanding is that there are costs and fees that are regularly set aside in the case of indigent defendants, but we will get a answer from that from the circuit clerk. Stan, did that answer your question, or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, just us rich, just us rich guys, Stan. Mr. Maguire?
Sure. Actually, there's been a lot of good questions. I guess the question I would have, if there isn't additional money to make sure these kids are taken care of, where would they go? Who, what would be the next step to provide funding to make sure some 10-year-old that's molested gets proper representation?
That's a good question. You know, we're fortunate to have a relatively good-sized staff and extremely fortunate to have three attorneys to work on behalf of these kids for pennies on what they could make in the private sector. I can tell you that when I came to the CASA organization five years ago, there were 36 CASA organizations in Illinois, and now there's 33. So, you know, unfortunately, the bottom line a lot of times can be numbers. We are committed to extensive fundraising. We have a halftime fundraising director. So, you know, we do everything we can to raise the appropriate amount of money. But some of the things that we're doing for these kids, to speak up for them at meetings, to make sure they're placed in appropriate places, a lot of these kids would get lost in the system were it not for the CASA organization.
Okay, I'm gonna jump in here and walk back what I just said. The language in the statute does say mandatory fee. So we'll have to check with the state's attorney to see how, what the meaning of the word mandatory is in the state of Illinois. But I would take that with a grain of, I would take what I said earlier with a grain of salt. How mandatory is mandatory? Any other questions for Mr. Record? One more, Mr. Kurtz.
I don't want to make a question. I just want to tell you that we are so appreciative of the work that CASA does in this community for our children, the ones that don't have the kind of backing that a good family could give them. And you are the alternative for these children. And I just want to say thank you, because I know the work of your advocates. They put in long, long hours with no pay at all. They're all volunteers. They have to, they have to produce detailed reports constantly for the courts. They have to go to court. They have to take their time. They have to spend time with this youngster for the safety and the good of our community. And I want to thank you and your organization for that work. Thanks, Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Any more questions? And I underscore the word questions. Seeing none, I would ask at this point, so we can discuss this further, I'd ask for a motion to recommend to the full board that we direct staff, or, excuse me, to direct staff to bring to the full board a ordinance to authorize the circuit clerk to collect a fee in support of the CASA program in the amount of $20. And
So move.
We'll go with that. Moved by Mr. Quisenberry and seconded by Mr. Langenheim. Comments or questions, Ms. Petrie?
Just a clarification. Will that give you sufficient time to give us some budgetary information?
Sure.
It'll be a week from this coming Thursday. All right, thank you.
If not, we can kick it down the road. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll declare that motion passed, and we'll see this at the full board meeting. Thank you, Mr. Record.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our extremely patient treasurer.
As always.
Thanks. I'll be brief. Just did what my report, just wanted to report on three different things. Give you a recap on nursing homes tax anticipation warrants. If you remember back in early December, they borrowed $937,885. And we repay that through real estate tax collections as they come in. And I made the final payment on September the 23rd. The interest rate this year was only .71. And the interest that they paid was $3,795. So after four, six years, I'm sorry, of tax anticipation warrants starting in the year 2009, they've paid $40,155.99 in interest. Moving on, General Corporate has prepaid public safety sales tax, the $1 million that they annually are paid, or loan from public safety. They did that on September 24th. And finally, real estate collections are now at 98.7% collected. The 23th of October, just a week from Thursday, is the last day to pay, October 24th being the tax sale. If my long tenure is any suggestion, I might be able to predict, we're going to be around 99.96 would be my guess. Is that the average over the last 16 years for total collections? So I'd certainly be glad to answer any questions. If not, ask that my report be accepted and placed on file.
Ms. Petrie?
This is just an interest question. I sort of scanned that list of unpaid taxes in the newspaper. It looked like it added up to a little bit more than you talked about, but that was the 6th of October. You probably have gotten some more payments since that time.
Right. We actually, I've never looked at it from the standpoint of, I actually don't look at the newspapers, just to make sure that it's actually done. But I'll tell you that we're also required to send out delinquent notices by certified mail. And this year, we sent out 2,005 of those. And that's the lowest number we've had since 2004, 10 years. So I think that the trend is more towards more collection.
Stan?
Just remember that 1% of collection means $3 million. Is that what?
I'll make a motion to accept and place the report on file, and that must have been in Patsy's district, because I didn't see that.
I think Mr. Kibler got there first, but we'll give you the second. So a motion by Mr. Kibler, seconded by Mr. James. Any additional questions for the treasurer? If not, oh, just under the wire, Mr. Maxwell.
Roughly, what does it cost to send those 2,000 notices out?
It's actually $3.78 per envelope. That's by law, we have to send out by certified mail. $3.78. It would be $3.79 if we did it through the post office. That's your trivia for the day.
Always saving us money. Thank you, sir.
Of course.
Any additional comments, questions? Seeing none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll accept that and place it on file. May I have an omnibus motion for items 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6? Mobile Home Business, Ms. Michaels and Mr. Mitchell.
Actually, real estate business this time. Very similar, but all five are real estate. And they are, just to go through it briefly, we've done this before, taxes that went to a tax sale, no tax buyer bought them. The trustee, who is actually the county, takes the tax buying position itself. And then after two and a half years, the redemption period expires, the county takes title to the property, wipes out all the back taxes, and we offer it for auction. These people have provided a bid which was accepted. So we're deeding this property over to someone who's actually gonna pay taxes on it for the next 100 years, I hope.
I stand corrected. Does the motion maker in the second understand what this is? Okay, even if I don't, thank you. Any questions for the treasurer? Mr. Kibler?
A quick question on valuation. How does, how does the tax sale valuation impact revenue? So if you sell it for 100 bucks, is that what they're gonna be taxed on? Or how are those typically handled?
They go back to just regular assessed value. I mean, these properties are, most of this is what we're talking about. We're talking about auctioned off property outside of the tax sale. It's not part of the tax sale. We're talking about strips of ground. Very rarely would there be an actual structure. We're talking about someone that may live in the rural areas who has a strip of ground, has no access to it. They've mowed it for years, but they won't actually own it. So it's a little strip of 25-foot by 100-foot. And that's what's happening here. The taxes would not be attractive at a tax sale. No tax buyer would want to buy that. So it goes, and it goes to the trustee, which is Champaign County. We allow it to run this through the redemption period of two and a half years. No one redeems it, being that no one wants to. The taxpayer himself does not want to pay that. It was probably not worth whatever the taxes are. So then we have a sealed bid auction with a $635 minimum bid, and that's how you get to where we are. But once that person, now, I'm not saying every one of these was that situation. Most of them are strips of ground in the real estate area. It just goes back to straight assessed value, and they pay what they would have paid in any other year.
I assume those get sold to adjoining property owners typically?
Well, not particularly. I think what's happened is a lot of times that it's a strip of ground behind somebody's house, and why should I go pay 600 bucks for it when nobody's using it with me anyway? And I'm mowing it. And my opinion has always been that, I've tried to get the trustee to agree to this, is that after you offer it a couple of times, nobody wants to buy it. Why can't we go to the neighbor and say, hey, why don't we just deed it over to you for nothing? But I'm not smart enough apparently to get that through. That was a joke. Thank you. Silence there.
Might have worked an hour ago.
Very serious group here. A little too serious for people in my profession. Yeah, apparently not, yeah.
Well, noting the record that that was a joke.
Yeah. My last joke.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll drag the auditor out of the corner over there. And JJ, if you want to cover both your monthly report and the quarterly report of the addendum, I can probably get a motion for both of those.
Sure. If we'd like to go ahead and, I'd ask that you accept them and place them on file. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Got a motion for these two reports, Mr. James and Mr. Jay. Questions? Why you sat here all this time?
Well, I want to talk about cash balances. That's exciting stuff then. Sorry, fund balances.
All right, well, we got nothing. Oh, Ms. Petrie?
I had to find it here. Can I ask you a question about page 122, your suggested?
We're gonna talk about that next.
Oh, sorry.
That's not on the floor right now.
Sorry.
Questions on the reports?
I'm not paying attention.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Reports are accepted and placed on file. Now you can talk about your policy change.
Sure. One of the findings that the outside auditors brought to us over the summer was needing to formalize a policy that the county has been doing since 2006. needing to formalize a policy that the county has been doing since 2006. And that is when we have a fund, when we go through and create the CAFR, at the end of the year, sometimes funds will have a negative balance. And when that happens, we have to transfer cash on paper to that fund so that we can report it in the CAFR. This is something that was put in place by a government accounting standards board paper back in 2005, 2006. And so we've been following their recommendations. Our outside auditors would like us to actually put something in writing as to what we are doing. And so we're asking that you, excuse me, I don't have the right paper in front of me. There it is. We're asking that we formalize a policy where we take a positive fund balance, a fund that has a positive balance, and allow it to cover the negative balance of funds that this happens to. It happens from time to time. In the last audit, there were six funds that we did this for. It does not affect your end of the year total balance. When we look for our 12.5%, we want to make sure the general corporate fund looks at its 12.5% things like that. This does not affect it. This is simply a paper transaction.
I may have a motion to recommend that the board adopt this. Ms. Schwartz and anybody want to second that? Ms. Petrie? Discussion. I think I saw Ms. Petrie stands first, then Ms. Michaels.
Now, I can ask my question. Think of me as needing accounting 101, all right? Since this is just paper transfer, what's the purpose?
To author a CAFR. In the CAFR, you cannot have a fund finish with a negative balance.
Oh.
That's just in, in the rules.
Rules. Got it.
And so they are telling us, Clifton is telling us, that they'd like us to formalize what we've been doing.
My question, is there a way to make sure that these are not negative before year end?
No.
Okay.
No. And the funds that this happens, for example, the Tort immunity fund is one that ends up that way. But then we have our self-funded insurance fund that covers that automatically. So these are funds that are related to each other. And for budgeting purposes, we may allow one to become a negative number, but in reality, they are balancing each other out.
And this is always what we've done anyway, right?
That's right.
This is just formalizing status quo.
That's right.
Okay. Any additional questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Appreciate your patience.
That's one thing Clifton won't be able to tell us about next year.
Move on. May I have a motion to accept and place on file the nursing home monthly report? Mr. Kurtz, Mr. Esri. Discussions, open session on the nursing home. Got Mr. Maxwell's email, I think. Mr. Maxwell, Mr. Harkey, anything you feel the need to share? Okay. Ms. Michaels?
Sorry. I read the report from Mr. Maxwell. I'm a little concerned that here we were all excited about getting the, the four rating, and now it's going to change and go down. And then I've also had several people in my area that have been concerned with the quality of the food that's still coming out of there. So I would please ask that you get with the board and come to us and find out what's going on.
Yeah, I got a constituent comment earlier this month about the food. Mr. Kurtz?
Thank you. I think I can address that, Diane, a little bit. I was at the nursing home yesterday at lunchtime. I was with the dietitian and the head of the kitchen and was taken through the kitchen as they were preparing lunch. Took a look at, at the, how they were working. And they discussed how they're now working on bringing in part-time people to cover those that call in sick. Also, that the food that I was watching as they were preparing it. They showed me the platters that are heated, and the plates that are heated, and the covers that keep them hot, which hadn't been done before. And I asked a few of the residents, and one, Jan Anderson's husband, is at the nursing home. I went to visit him. And they felt that the food was getting better. So I'm thinking it's going to take time. But the problem they have is sometime they get a call in the morning, two or three people won't come in. They're working on fixing that, that problem.
Ms. Michaels?
The comments that I've received are more about the quality of the actual food, not the service or anything like that. They appreciate the staff, and the staff has done a really nice job. But the quality of the food has seemed to be not what it was before.
He's been, I'm sorry, mayor. Okay. He's been there a while, Ansel Anderson. And I sat and I talked with him, and I asked him specifically about the food. And he felt that it was improving over the period of time that he's been there. He's in for therapy, so he's been there a while. I'm not trying to defend or, or question what you hear. We know we have problems. We've had problems with the food service. I just wanted to go in and see how the operation was working. So sort of surprising them. I didn't expect to, but I, I just happened to hit it at lunchtime. And, you know, I used to run kitchen, obviously. So I understand how that works. And so I think that we're moving forward, maybe slowly. But I think we're, we're going to improve the quality as well. I've been hearing some of those as well.
Anybody else? Mr. John Jay?
I don't want to drag this out forever, but I will tell you that I was at a function with my wife Saturday. And we were out of town, we was at Monticello. And the lady sitting next to me, talking to the person across the table, said, I sure wish I could talk to somebody on the Champaign County Board. And I'm sitting next to her, and the lady said, well, you're sitting next to a board member. As ironic as that is, she was upset with the food. Her mom's been here for some time. She said the food has not gotten better. It got a little better, then it's gone back down. It's not dependable. And it's to the point where they'd like to do something else. So I think it still is a serious problem.
Thank you, Mr. Jay. I had a question for you, Mr. Maxwell, about your comment about the star rating. Is, is the nursing home in danger of not being able to work with students anymore? I mean, we just gained that. Okay, that's what I, why I wouldn't make sure that those, because I knew there were plans on track to begin ramping up working with student, nursing students again. And Josh, it sounds like you say that's going to continue.
Yeah, that was confirmed at our last nursing home board director's committee meeting by everybody, that that would not endanger our cooperation with Parkland on bringing in student nurses.
Okay, very, very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Maxwell?
I believe that's, I was not at the last meeting, so I did not hear that. To my knowledge, we have, there's no reason why we can't have some nursing students in there now.
Yeah, I was, I was at the meeting, but I didn't quite grasp the significance of that, I guess. Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, accepting the nursing home report and placing it on file? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's placed on file. We have one budget amendment and, or transfer. It's a budget amendment 14-38, allowing the Veterans Assistance Commission to accept $1,000 grant from the Urbana VFW, post 630. May I have a motion, Mr. Jay and Mr. Harkey? I trust there will be no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. On to the county administrator's report.
The reports are at your desk. The general corporate fund revenue and expenditure projection report is substantially unchanged from last month. I will tell you that the sales tax revenues are not really rebounding much in the third quarter. So year-to-date, we're at, right at about 1.5% ahead of where we were last year in, in the quarter cent sales tax and in the income tax. The 1 cent sales tax is up almost 29%. And that's a result of a new business out in the unincorporated area. And I am also told it is a result of Prairie Materials providing a lot of materials for rebuilding Gifford. And it is, it is in the unincorporated area. So it is not a spike I can, I expect will continue next year, but it is a spike to that revenue for this year, which is an anomaly to all the other state shared revenues. Bottom line, it looks like we will come in at about 97.6% of our budgeted revenue for the year. Expenditure is also, for the most part, trending with savings. There are substantial savings, look like will be achieved on the SLEP salaries for this year. And if you've watched your vacant positions listing every month under policy, you will see that there have been consistently some vacancies within the sheriff's office staffing, which I believe is the reason for that. We are, look to be underspending commodities, however, this, well, for example, postage changed since, since October 1st. So now I know we will spend all the postage line because we've already spent it. But based on September numbers, it looked like we were going to underspend it. What that can mean, though, is we purchased $62,000 of postage on October 8th, and it will most likely last us through the end of December and could take us into January as well. So those kinds of things just, you know, happen with these projections. But overall, we look like we will spend about 97.8% of our total expenditure budget, which keeps us where we anticipated we would be at the end of this year with about a $1 million deficit budget. Right now, the projected as compared to budgeted are very close in terms of where it looks.
And that, that $1 million is the consequence of the
13 months.
13th month.
Right.
Motion to accept and place on file, Mr. Kibler and Mr. Rosales. Ms. Petrie?
Ms. Pucey, an information question on the expenditure report. You pointed out about the SLEP salaries, a saving there. But I'm interested that overtime in relationship to saving of salaries seems rather low. Is there an explanation for that?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, the saving on salaries is 517,000. Am I reading this correctly?
Right.
And the only amount on overtime is 25,000.
No, that's how much we expect to overspend the budget for overtime.
Oh, sorry.
We expect to spend that column right to the left is what we expect we will spend, 513,000.
Okay, sorry, I misread.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor. Oh, Mrs. Schwartz.
Just a quick question. So we seem to be really lucky that we are underspending SLEP because the revenues came down. So if the sheriff does fill all his positions, how else are we going to?
Well, this is year-to-date. So we have, oh, for next year? Well, yeah, he's, he's like, I mean, it's, it's unlikely that he will have this level. He's had a lot of turnover this year. And it takes time to replace those officers. So I would, I don't know that, this is, this has never been this high in the past, and I would not expect it to be this high next year either.
I mean, the draft budget assumes full staffing, right?
It does. Yes.
Okay.
And one more. So does the draft budget assumes this, whatever, we have a $1 million less in revenues?
Yeah. Because we adjusted the fees, and, and a lot of the loss in revenue is in the fees. And the draft budget takes into consideration what we know at the point that we write the draft budget. Obviously, these things change. But for example, the sales tax revenue, the public safety sales tax in the draft budget is projected to increase by 0.4%, which has never been that low. But it's been flat. So, yeah.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's accepted and placed on file. Next, we have a resolution amending the general corporate fund department staffing budget for fiscal year 2015. And this is essentially to align the staffing budget with the draft budget. May I have a recommendation to forward this to the full board with a recommendation for approval? Mr. Kurtz and Mr. Harkey. Discussion, questions of the county administrator? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And finally, a recommendation to the county board to receive and place on file the fiscal year 2015 budget. May I have a motion, Mr. Kurtz, Mr. Harkey? Any questions or comments? I think we have had considerable discussion about the budget already. Ms. Petrie?
Just for the public, just because it's being placed on file now, the public still can come in and make comments. Is that accurate?
That is entirely accurate.
Thank you.
The final approval for the budget will take place in, at the November full board meeting. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have one more item under other business. We have a request from the state's attorney to recommend the full board adopt a continued agreement with the appellate prosecutor's office to act as the agent of the county in appellate matters. Moved by Mr. Kibler, seconded by Mr. Harkey. Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Items for consent are D2, F1, G3, and 4, and H1, if I'm not mistaken. I have no chair's report. I have no other business. That concludes finance.
All right. Good evening. We'll start out with appointments and reappointments. The first item under A1 is an appointment at the community action board for an unexpired term ending December 1st, 2016. Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to appoint Kim Ruckman.
Second.
Mr. Kibler, seconds. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next, I have for the Pinfield Water District, an unexpired term ending May 31st of 2019. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dick Wilfong. That was my appointee.
Mr. Kibler, seconds again. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Also passes unanimously. And I refer you to the addendum for the Sangamon and Drummer Drainage District for an unexpired term through August 31st, 2017. Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to appoint John Leonard.
Mr. Jay, seconds. Any discussion? Mr. James?
Thank you.
Letting you talk now.
Thank you. Gibson City, Illinois. Is there a reason?
Not that I know of.
Nobody else applied, or?
That's it.
Okay. Well, that's a reason.
That's it. Okay.
Thank you.
Nobody else applied. That's the reason.
All right. Seeing no further question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion also passes unanimously, moving right along. We have a revised August 2014 report from the clerk and a September 2014 report from the clerk. I entertain a motion to accept those and place them on file.
So moved.
Mr. Rosales?
Second.
Mr. Langenheim. Unfortunately, the clerk is not here, so you can ask me a question. I'm not sure I can answer it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Now we have the county administrator's administrative services report for September. I'd like a motion to accept and place on file. Mr. James? Mr. Kibler, seconds. Any questions or concerns? Seeing, Mr. James?
We had a discussion in caucus, and I just want to make sure that I was given the correct legal advice that I always do. But these positions that are listed are positions that are within the budget, but some of them have not been filled for quite some time. Am I correct?
That is correct, although with tonight's resolution, you did eliminate two positions that had not been filled for quite some time. And many of these, most, for example, the um
Correctional officers.
Right. No, that's, that's a moving target.
Right.
That, that doesn't mean it's the same position. It's just one of, you know, 50-some correctional officer positions that is vacant.
Well, I guess when I made my statement, I said that the positions, some of them that were being, there are the two that were eliminated have been on this list, I think, for some time.
They had.
And basically, General Corp held that money even though they were budgeted for because they weren't filled. And my response, though, saying, well, it's, it's a neutral thing for putting this new person in, well, in a way, no, because now General Corp won't have those funds. They'll be paid to an employee.
You're right. The report you had from me tonight on the expenditure, you know, it will, you'll be, you'll be underspending the budget by a lesser amount when you actually spend it.
Right. I just want to make sure when I give my free legal advice, it's good.
Are, are we done with legal advice, Mr. James?
Yes, we are.
All right. All those in favor? All those in favor of accepting this report and placing it on file, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The next item we have under other business was to be a reconsideration of the placard system for public health, but I understand, Mr. Kurtz, who asked me to bring this to you again, would like to move that we defer this to next month's COW. Mr. Kurtz, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I'd appreciate that. I'll be very honest with you, I'm blunt, three of my yes votes are not here tonight. And I don't want to lose this because I think this is a very important issue. And I would appreciate it if we could defer it when those other votes are in full, when we have a full board.
I'll second that.
I'll also point out that Mr. Roberts couldn't be here to talk to us about that.
Yeah, he's on his anniversary.
It might be better to consider this one.
He's on his anniversary tonight, he wasn't going to show up, for a good reason.
Wasn't a good enough excuse to get out of that obligation?
Absolutely.
This is on the question of the deferral. Mr. Maxwell. Do you have anything? Okay. So any discussion on the deferral? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
No.
I'd say the ayes have that. Motion passes. Okay. All right. I had already, yeah, I had already made my ruling, but just, just because I'm a nice guy, all those in favor of deferring this to next month's COW, raise your hand, please. And what's our total right now? All those against, please raise your hand. One, please, Mr. Jay. Okay, so the motion to defer has failed. You guys have to say nay louder next time. So, let's open, discuss, I would now need a motion on the floor to consider this, actually, because the only motion we had was to defer. Ms. Petrie moves that we consider placard systems for public health? Do I have, I have a second, Mr. Schrader?
Second.
All right, discussion, questions? Mr. Kurtz.
Thank you. First, I, I'd like to say that the placard system has been working well in the cities, in my estimation. Champaign, Abbot, we had a board meeting this evening before this meeting, and it seems to be that our constituents who have made some complaints about what's going on when they, when they see a placard and they walk into a restaurant and they find that there's a problem, have been calling CUPHD to come out and take a look. I think that's one type of transparency that's very, very important. Our constituents are becoming progressively interested and acknowledging the fact that they have more information than they've ever had about a restaurant they're going into. I know that some of you feel that this is additional regulation. I don't think so. I don't consider this more regulation. The inspectors will still do the same job that they've always done, inspect. The difference is, is now our constituents, who depend on us to represent them, for the safety of their families and themselves, now have an opportunity to weigh in on a restaurant that doesn't have the type of service that they should render to our constituents here in Champaign County. So safety is a very important issue for me, and always has been, as a restaurateur and as a businessman. Thirdly, I think it's important that we have consistency across the county. The both cities are now required to have placards. About half of all of the county have volunteered to put placards up, and that only tells me one thing. It tells me those that don't want the placard up may have something to hide, or are afraid that when an inspector comes in, they will have to announce problems to their customers. Also, I wanted it understood that I don't think any inspector, and we have a survey here of what took place, and some, some feel that there might have been some sway or some bias, I don't think any inspector who has integrity would ever put his job on the line to try and skewer this survey. When they go into a restaurant, they go in, in every restaurant with the same reason, and that's to find the problems to be corrected, for the safety of the restaurateur, who, for his sake, for liability, and for the consumer. I think it's important that we understand that these placards are not a deterrent to business, but I think is absolute opportunity for restaurants to show their service to the community by having a clean restaurant and a safe place to eat. Now, I know that people will say, well, we haven't had a big outbreak of salmonella or any of that, but you know what? I can tell you right now, you go home and you don't feel well the next day, or you have some type of stomach ailment, you don't call the CUPHD and say, hey, I just got salmonella from a restaurant. More salmonella cases are unreported in this country than ever before, and I can tell you that for a fact, because I worked on salmonella many, many decades ago, and I have all of the, the research to show hundreds of thousands of cases of salmonella across the country that were never reported. So what I'd like here, because the reason for my deferral was that we're taking advantage of the fact that I don't have three votes for yes, I'd like to be able to have that vote balanced by the fact that there are some board members who are not here who would like to vote in favor of this. Now, I can't make that change now because you have decided not to defer this, so that the full board can have an opportunity. So my goal here tonight is to hope that I can convince you that your constituents, if you responded to them and talked to them, in my estimation, would overwhelmingly state they'd like to know more about what goes on in those restaurants and have a placard up if they were asked. That's all I have to say right now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Ms. Schwartz.
I just want to make sure we clarify this. We're not talking about stopping inspections. I think we all think salmonella is a big deal. I think it's, the issue is, do we put placards on or not? And I'm actually thinking those placards are highly misleading, because I've seen green placards on restaurants, that if you go online and read, they've had some huge, ugly violations. And maybe the reason that we have more complaints now is because people go in, see green placards and say, how can that be, given what I know? So I don't think it's a fair statement to say we care about salmonella, because of course we care, and of course we want all these restaurants that should be shut down, shut down, and this is not what we're talking about. We will shut them down if they should be. I'm concerned about green placards that are not really representing the truth. And by the way, I would prefer consistency to erase placards everywhere, except I don't have the choice, because Champaign-Urbana can do it, so I can at least make the choice of not putting it in the county.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. Next, I have Mr. Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a complete opposite of Mr. Kurtz. I would like to first stipulate that if the cities of Champaign and Urbana want to have placards, more power to them. The people in the rural area do not want the placards in general, with the exception of maybe one. And I don't, wouldn't call him rural, he's kind of mixed up. But, but the fact of the matter is, the fact of the matter is, the, that if, if the folks in the rural area don't want them, why are we putting them in? Because it doesn't change the fact that they're still going to be checked, it just means that they don't have to have the placard on their window, and they shouldn't have that there if they don't want it. And I'm telling you, the folks in the rural areas, for the majority, do not want it. If they do want it, as Mr. Kurtz indicated, they're certainly welcome to have them. So we're not depriving anybody that wants them to have them, we're protecting those that don't want to be pestered with red, white, blue, pink and orange, or whatever the colors are, in their front windows. And I urge you to give the people in the rural area the, the chance to run their businesses they see fit, not as somebody in Champaign-Urbana thinks they ought to run it.
Thank you, Mr. Jay. Next, I have Mr. Kibler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So ultimately, when this first came up, I was against it for a number of reasons that I'm still investigating whether or not they're logical or not with Mr. Kurtz. But that said, today at caucus, the reason why I didn't vote to defer is that I wanted to hear some of the thoughts from the rural community, because as a person who lives, well, I don't live in Champaign, I live really close to it, but I am here all the time, I have enjoyed, and I've really looked out for the, the placard systems. But thinking about it, two things come to mind. One is, it actually stopped me from going into an establishment. No, I've even gone into a yellow one before. And quite frankly, because it's a national chain of a really, really nice little cafe in downtown Champaign that, quite frankly, should, I don't know why they had a yellow, but it didn't detract me at all, and still hasn't given me a negative opinion. But I think really what, what made me, why I'm on the fence still, is the fact that from my caucus tonight, there seemed to be a sense that those in the rural areas absolutely do not want this, 100%, not 100%, but very close, that they do not want it. And I don't, I don't understand the reason why, because I guess I'm a city folk guy, along with Mr. Maxwell, since we're pointing the finger at him. But ultimately, even though it's Mr. James, ultimately, I'm, I'm really curious as to what it is that the county, the rural areas feel like is a major disservice, or what is it about it that, do they feel like that they're being bullied? Do they feel like that they're being disenfranchised from the rest of the cities? What is it about it that makes it so negative? Because I can see the benefits, I've lived the benefits, but I can also see the point where if it feels like it's improperly being applied to the rural areas, I would, I would really love to hear more about that piece, which is why I wanted to hear this discussion tonight.
All right. Next, I have Mr. James, then I have Ralph, and then I have Aaron.
Well, I'll be as brief as I always am, but I'm in the rural area, whether John Jay can read a map or not. The constituents I talk to, and I do go out, I do go out for coffee, I don't always eat, I go to Rantoul Restaurants, Gifford Restaurants, there's none in Ludlow, but there is a lady that'll give you a sandwich. I go to Gifford and all those other little towns, Pinfield when it was open. Most people I talk to really don't have a problem with it. And when I heard Rachel say about the inspections, yeah. The inspection scores them, this place card lets you know, in general terms, without having to read all that check marks and boxes, that this is a safe place or a somewhat safe place. And I, like Jeff, there's a restaurant I go into every day, that if I owned it, there'd be no way it'd look like it does. But I don't own it, and I enjoy the people that I go in there to visit with, so I don't worry about their score. And I don't eat their food all the time, either. But, being serious about it, I look at government, and, and with all the things that are going on in the world, from Ebola on down, that this is a tool, like we heard tonight with the Enterprise Zone. And I look at, when I'm in buildings, I get on there and I see this thing from the city about this elevator, and they have to be licensed to run it, but it doesn't tell me if it's safe, it doesn't tell me if that cable's 20 years old, but it tells me somebody's looked at it. And that's what these place cards are doing. And I will lay money on this table when I hear this about constituents, we all have our circle of friends. But if we get outside of that circle and we really go out and do the things, like when I invite Jay up to eat and he don't show up, he would hear the different dialogue. But I think it's well worthwhile, other communities have had it for years. I think that, you know, to say about the rural area, the one thing about rural areas that I have learned, and I love it myself, we can get by if a lot of things city folks can't. We can take our four-wheelers out, we can burn trash in our neighbor's yard, there are just a lot of things we can do that you guys can't do, and we enjoy it. So when we talk about Champaign-Urbana, we get scared because we hear all the horror stories and all the new rules and all the new this. But Jay and everybody else in the rural area, those inspectors will not spend the gas and the time to run down every little complaint. They come on a schedule, they check it, it's a worthwhile tool. I hope this board can look at that, and, and they've made great strides in their reporting. And whether we like somebody or not, I've heard that ever since I've been on this board. This guy don't do a good job, this guy don't do a good job. Well, my land, they're in the job, let them do their job. If they're not doing it, that's where their administrators or their bosses ought to be talking to them, not us. So I support it.
All right, next, Mr. Langenheim.
Microphone, Ralph, please.
I think we can all agree that the inspections are designed to protect the people who are eating in those restaurants. Why, then, are the results of those inspections being kept secret from them? It's, I fail to understand.
Thank you, Ralph. Mr. Esri.
When I go out to eat, and I do quite a bit, I very rarely notice them. I'm, I'm, I'm one of them who just walks into, I know where I'm going to go to eat, I go to eat. Sometimes I do notice them, but very rarely. Being out in the rural area, the last time the constituents actually spoke on this, the rural area did not want the Health District. It was the cities who voted in the Health District, period, out in the county. The rural areas said, no, thank you. I guess it's one of these, from my opinion, if it ain't fit, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. We don't have issues, who's to say that we can't have an outbreak of salmonella? It could be out in the rural, it could just as easily be in the cities, because there's more places in the cities to eat. To me, it is another regulation, it's a, it's still, the fact, it's a snapshot, things at any one restaurant could go to heck in a hat basket the next day over somebody just messing up accidentally. And it could make a lot of people sick. It's, it's not something that I feel that needs to be done, in that it is just a snapshot. That's one of the biggest things in my mind, it's a snapshot. If you were getting inspected every day, which, of course, that isn't possible to have happen, if you were getting inspected every day, well, then, that wouldn't be needed even then, because the inspector would be there every day, and, oh, today you're shut down because you didn't pass. So it's, it's, it's something that, it's just, in my mind, still is not needed. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Quisenberry. Well, round two with this. I guess the only thing that has really changed, or the one thing that really has changed since we've last taken this issue up was, I believe now we are online with the inspections, that we can go online. I know not everybody can, but we can go online now, we can see our favorite restaurant to see how last inspection was. That's, that's a major change. That's huge. And we've asked that for years, and we finally got that. I guess, I don't want to take too long, but my biggest point has always been is whether or not CU Health can do the job. And I, honestly, I have a number of examples I won't go through tonight, that tells me they can't do the job. They can't do it consistently and properly. And I'll always go back to the bakery in Toluoto. And Al, you and I met with Mr. Roberts and Julie Pride about this issue. And it came, came to my, I guess it kind of came to my notion today, that I would check with the owner of the building out there at Toluoto, and I'll be brief about this, that the, if you want to start a restaurant, and I'm talking to my District 4, if you want to start a restaurant out in District 4, outside the city limits of Champaign, it's going to take a minimum of three months to get rolling. And by then, you've spent three months of rent, and you're already in a whole three months. When, when you start up a bakery like this dear grandmother down Toluoto, it took over three months to get her going, it's a carryout operation, no seating, a stove, and when you walk in the door, you see a display case three foot long, two shells deep. That's all it is. It took over three months to get that going. And on top of that, she was harassed for months about not having a hood over her oven, till we finally met. And he, and finally, finally, Mr. Roberts showed up for wattage. He looked at the stove, and the stove had a wattage that didn't allow it to have a hood. The hood was $3,200. So there- that didn't allow it to have a hood. The hood was $3,200. So, there's $3,200 there. If someone went and stepped in and helped, they would have had to pay $3,200. If you went across the road around 45, there's a very famous Subway shop over there, and there's an oven just as big that bakes all day long. No hood, no hood at all. The other thing was, when it was inspected, there was no trap found within the drainage system. So, the sinks had to be adjusted and altered. Come to find out later on, another inspection there, that trap was down there. So then the sinks had to be put back in the way they were. That's $400. When we met Mr. Kurtz, we were told that if that money, or if that bill was sent, it would be reimbursed. I asked Mr. Davis today, and as of today, a year later, it has not been reimbursed. We were lied to. That's my problem with this whole thing, that when you get outside, my experience has been that there's been lack of consistency, and this is just sending me through the roof. I've asked a member of the Board of Health, County Board of Health, if he's been outside the county at a restaurant, as a, just a Joe walking off the street, unofficial capacity, never has talked to anybody, never has been in that capacity. I invite you to do that, or anybody else on the Board of Health, unofficial capacity, go talk to these restaurateurs. Because that placard out there is a threat. It's threatening out there. We have public health inspections, that placard has nothing to do whether or not they're done or not. That's my point. And on top of that, what's changed, I'll reiterate, is you can go on the website, and you can see those. And if you wait for a newspaper, there's two months, they're two months old. And I know the reason for that, because the FOIA takes that long. That's why. You can get the real-time data. So, that's my issue. Another thing is, I'm, I'm really concerned about, about the atmosphere up there. I'm really concerned, because I've heard someone from the lodge down at Toledo. And I'm just scared that they do a breakfast one month, or one day a month. It's a fundraiser, just one day of the month. And they, they have to be inspected, they have food that's refrigerated and everything else. But, but when I talked to one of the chefs down there, and it's, it's a free will donation, and that's their money maker. Once a month, they have a breakfast. That place will be placarded. According to reading what this resolution is, that's going to be, that's presented to us, that the Board of Health approved unanimously, they'll placard the lodge down there at Toledo, and anybody else. And I also talked to another individual that was concerned, they wanted to start a food pantry in Toledo, but they, they were not going to go through the mess of having to have refrigerated items, because if they did, they would have to be inspected. So that's what I'm hearing from my district. And those are genuine concerns, especially when you can go, and you go out in these rural areas, and you can go to Pasodome, you can go to Ivesdale, you can go to Toledo, those restaurants, and if you put a yellow placard up there, I don't believe they'll be there in 36 hours to rein inspect. I, I, I just, I just can't believe it. From, from what I've gathered and information, from those individuals out there who run those restaurants, I just, I just can't believe it. And that's what this resolution says, that they have to be out there within, I believe, 24 or 36 hours to rein inspect if they're inspected. I, I'm sorry. I've not seen anything credible, from what I've learned, that that will take place. And, and you can say, well, John, they can read it on the website and see it. How's that going to help? Well, the point is, is somebody can walk in that restaurant, see a placard, they may or may not know what it means, but it could be, you know, it could be there for four or five days. That's my concern. So, when you get, when you get that kind of attention, and you're out there, and you've got one restaurant, and those little communities I just mentioned, except for Toledo, then if you get hit like that, you won't have people come back, if they come from somewhere else. If it's a local, they'll probably just ignore it, because they're familiar with the place. But if someone comes out there, they're not coming back. And, and Sedors, once again, tried to have a restaurant down there. And it was a two-way street, it, it was like two heads button, the individuals tried to open it, were a little crass, a little crude, but then they shouldn't have been treated with the same kind of crass and crudeness, which I heard they were treated. And I tried to intervene, to bring the two parties together, and it just got to the point where it just didn't happen again. And, and Sedors is a community of a little over 400 people. And I talked to the mayor about this, and I talked to other individuals in the community. It's nice, it would be nice to have a restaurant down there, because a lot of things, there's business done in that restaurant down there, has in the past, back in the 90s, it was booming, early 2000s, it was booming. But the last three tries have just been absolute disasters, because it takes three and a half months to get a restaurant started that's been there before I was even born, and lived in that community. It was a restaurant, bar, restaurant, bar, restaurant, bar. It's been established. But to sit there and say, I'm going to pay three months' rent, and, and be in a hole for three months, that's my point. I can't believe that this thing will be taken care of properly. That's why I cannot support it this time.
All right, next, I have Mr. Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Quisenberry. It's a tough act to follow. Let me start by saying I'm a strong advocate of restaurant food safety. I mean, it's critical, it's critical, probably to no one more than me. For the past 30 years, I've eaten the vast majority of my meals at restaurants in Champaign County, Illinois. So, the fact that I'm still here indicates to me that the CU Public Health District and its restaurant inspection regiment are doing a very good job. I do have concerns about inconsistencies between codes as they're enforced in Champaign County, and codes that they're enforced in other counties, but that's, I think, a subject for another day. Over all these years, I have been able to trust in the fact that if a restaurant doesn't meet Champaign County's minimum inspection standards, the way I can tell, is the door's locked. And I think that that has served Champaign County well for years. We have a very low incidence of foodborne illness in this, in this county, largely in part due to these efforts. So, I support the idea of regulation, I support the idea of restaurant inspections, I support the idea of closing, you know, the bad actors and, out there, and there are some of them. But I still cannot be brought to support this particular aspect of the regulations, which I think is unnecessary and potentially even counterproductive. And I've said this, often, people are probably tired of hearing me say this, but I feel that the placards, because your likelihood of getting sick on a given day depends so much on sort of random factors that are going on in that kitchen on that day, or, or on behalf of the servers in that restaurant on that day, I think these create a false sense of security, I think they create a needless sense of concern. And I have to apologize to Mr. Kurtz. During our caucus meeting, I said I thought they create an unnecessarily adversarial relationship between what should be a partnership between the inspector and the restaurant owner. And he, he called me on it, and he was correct. The restaurant inspector should not be a partner with the restaurant owner. I mean, they're, they're the, they're the traffic cop, you know, he's not a, he's not your partner when he pulls you over for speeding. But I do believe that there's a strong educational and informational component to what the inspectors have to be out there doing, when they're in kitchens, helping these restaurants improve. And I do believe that the more, I do believe this placard system is not in furtherance of creating that positive working relationship between the inspector and the restaurant owner. I think, more importantly, I think there's a better way to do this. We have, fortunately, the CU Public Health District has restaurant inspection results on the website. And if you're interested in seeing not just one snapshot, but seeing the overall history of an establishment, which I think you, gives you a much better idea of how seriously they take the quality of their food, their food safety, you can go to the website, and you can see this longitudinal history. And I think that's very important, and I commend the CU PhD for doing that. I like the idea of voluntary compliance. I have no problem with restaurants wanting to hang their, you know, if they get an A on their report card, hang it on your wall. And I think that that, if they gain an advantage over other restaurants by doing that, and you have restaurants competing to see who can be the best, you know, who can be the cleanest, who can be the safest, more power to them. But I do not support mandatory hanging of the placards, for the reasons I've stated, so I cannot support this.
Okay, Gary, go ahead.
Thank you. I've had a couple problems with this ordinance, and also I have talked to some of my constituents about it. Initially, I was concerned, and if you look at under E2, yellow indicates rein inspection required. And the last sentence of that, number two, says, "A rein inspection will be conducted as determined by the health officer." Now, you may, nowhere in this ordinance do I see that the health ordinance officer will get back there in 36 hours. That may be policy, but it's not in the ordinance. I would like to see that in the ordinance. The other thing that, I have been contacted by a banker fairly recently, because he couldn't get an establishment opened up in due time. And he was wanting to know if anything I could do with it. And I did contact Mr. Roberts, and Mr. Roberts kept me fully informed, as to, it didn't speed the process, process up any, but at least he kept me informed. So I guess that helped. The other thing is, it's just a snapshot in time. It doesn't really tell us the overall history of the restaurant, how it's doing. And the case in point I'd like to make, and I think we all read about the July 14th inspection of the nursing home, that got a green placard, the July 14th. And I think we're not real happy with the way that the inspections at the nursing home have, have been recently. So, just to walk in, it's a, it's a green placard. Now, I'm sure that we're going to improve that, but I, that, again, that's the, the snapshot in time I'm talking about. Doesn't really give you the true picture of what's going on. Thank you.
Mr. McGuire, you haven't spoken yet, and Ms. Petrie, and then I'll get you, Mr. Jay, Mr. Kurtz, on the second round.
Being from a small town like Leroy and Sedors and some of these places, people tend to know your business, you know, maybe that makes it a little different than a larger town. When something like this happens, you, and they look at a placard on the outside of a restaurant, and they say, well, what's going on? And, it's a small market, there's only so many people in a little town. So, it has a big impact. When it's Champaign, and one of the restaurants gets a yellow or a green placard on it, 2,000, 3,000 people hasn't seen that placard. The response and return market is much larger, so they, obviously they can weather that market better. But when 10 or 15 of your friends start talking about, hey, you know, such and such restaurant in Sedors got a green or yellow placard, and they don't understand it, within about two hours, everybody in town knows it, and your market's gone. So, that's, that's one of the issues that I really have with this, especially when we all know, which was, would be the expectation that Alex was, Chris was talking about, is that, you know, it should be closed if there's really a problem. Or, if we're doing the inspections and things are being done correctly, the restaurant shouldn't be open, or they should be fixing the problem. So, I think the, the placards are necessary.
Thank you. Ms. Petrie.
Thank you very much. Mine would be very quick. I voted no the first time. The reasons I gave for voting no is the slice and time issue. It could be good today and tomorrow, it could be bad next day, bad. They don't come around. It's only really basically on a yearly basis, unless you get a yellow or a red. But my main issue is the criteria that's used for the scoring. And you could have an egregious issue, and it would not drop you down to a score, which is, the, the line is 35 out of 100. And this will give you a green placard. It could be, when I say egregious, I mean really egregious, yet you could get a yellow placard because you have 10, basically incidental, but the way the scoring is, those 10 incidental knock you down at, say, 34, which puts you right under the line, and you get a, a yellow. And Ms. Burksen gave us an excellent example at caucus, so I'm going to steal it from her with her permission, and she pointed out the scoring on butter. Butter has got to be kept chilled. But if you're cooking, and you're doing a, making pie crust, that butter cannot be used that cold, and so it's going to be softened. And if they came in, and that's what was happening, there goes your score. And so, I love that example, because it underlines my great concern with the scoring. I spent 90 minutes with Mr. Roberts, trying to convince him how important it is to engage some of the people at the university, so that we could rethink the scoring. And the second part is, that there is no control to see whether or not these placards are actually making a difference. He came in with his long report on these numbers, but there is no control group as to whether these are effective or not. So I have those three major issues with this whole system.
Okay, thank you, Patty. Anybody who hasn't spoken yet want, want to speak, because we're ready to start hitting people a second time. All right, Mr. Kurtz.
Thank you. Has some good, good arguments here. Yeah, we have one of the toughest regulations of safety inspections, probably in the state. We take that seriously, and as Chris said, he appreciates that. It's important that we keep that going. When it comes to John and some of his issues, we've talked, we've tried to work together to get him rectified. The problem is, is that some of those issues really don't relate to the placard system. It's the, it's the rules and regulations that are tough, that sometimes makes it a little tougher to open a restaurant. But that's, I think, a good way, because it makes sure that that restaurant's ready up to code. I think the placard system is a really good system. I personally think that transparency, which we discuss and talk about all the time, is part of that. And so, I think we've really talked this out, and I'd like to call the question at this point, and have a roll call vote.
Well, I'm not going to take the call for the question, because I have two people who signaled that they wanted to talk. I'm going to hit them, and if they're done, if there's nobody else after that, I'll call the question.
Do I have my comment?
No. Mr. Jay.
Point of order, you need, you need a second on the roll call if you want it.
I'll ask for that when we get to a chance to vote.
Thank you. I, I'll be brief, I promise.
I keep hearing that.
One of the things I'd like for you all to put in the back of your mind is, if, if we do not support this tonight and vote it down, it doesn't mean that the placards are gone forever, it means that they're not going to happen right away. If at some point in time, it's proven that they saved millions of lives, we can always address it again. But what I think that we forget, with just a little bit of humor, is that if you're in Sedors, and you have a meal there, and you go out of that front door feeling bad, you're not going to need the Department of Public Health to shut you down. There won't be anybody in that restaurant forever until that's fixed. That's how fast the small communities work, literally and really. And that's one of the reasons maybe Sedors doesn't have a restaurant today, I'm not sure. John would know better than I, but, but I would really ask you, I plead with you tonight, let us, let this lay for a while. If at some point in time, we really, really need those placards up that nobody likes in a rural area, we can always get them later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Last one I had was Mr. Kibler.
So I have a 17-part question, I'm just kidding. Two things I want to highlight, is that I hear normally, and I do appreciate the argument, that if, if a specific ordinance or rule will apply only to a certain segment of our, of our community, then we should probably really consider those that are represented by that group. And so far, it's really the county, not Champaign, Savoy, Urbana, any of those areas. And so I put heavy weight on what my counterparts from the rural areas are telling me right now. The second thing is, that the placard system is not the end-all, be-all either. I would highly encourage that the, that the Board of Health consider other items or activities that can be done without an approval from this board, to shine a light, if you will, on what restaurants are absolutely fantastic to go to, and which ones to avoid. So, you have the website that's been updated, but that doesn't have to be the end of it either. It could be items in newspapers, placards or what, not placards, but websites, that identify which ones are good and which ones are bad. So this does not have to necessarily be the, the, the end, as Mr. Jay has said, and it doesn't necessarily have to be the end of what options exist for the goal set by the Board of Health.
All right. I, I think I'm going to call this to close, but since I'm the chair, I'm going to say one thing. The, the thing that makes this for me... The thing that makes this for me is, several years ago, the war on baked products at the Urbana Market at the Square, which, after some legislative change, baked products are now again available at the market at the square. And nobody's the worst for it. They're being sold. The young woman who was most affected by this was later able to earn more money towards her college education. The whole thing about that was, there was an interpretation that the CU Board of Health, or CU Public Health District decided to say, we can't allow baked goods to be sold at the market at the square anymore, and we're going to enforce that. You have to use this kind of kitchen, and you have to use it in this kind of way to sell it. And the outcry against that was so great, that there was a legislative change to tell them, you went too far here. And now we're back to status quo, and we're happier for it. And I just think that is an example of why I'm, like Mr. Schrader, not ready to put this in the hands of a group that feels like control and extreme is what they need to enforce, not what's appropriate and what's necessary. Because there's state law that says, there's state health codes that says what they have to do. I think many times, it gets pushed so far that some folks can't open a business, can't operate a business, even though they pose no threat to anybody. So now there will be, Ralph, because somebody asked for it and you seconded it. So, that's right, you wanted it, didn't you?
You wanted to second it.
Yeah, okay, good. So we are ready to vote, and it will be a roll call vote.
And the vote is how?
The question is, we have a motion to institute placards. So a vote yea means you are supporting this motion. A vote of nay means you are not supporting it.
And this is a recommendation to the county board, is that correct?
This would be a recommendation to the county board, so we get to do this one more time if you pass it. You cannot abstain just because you can't decide. You have to have a conflict. Do you have a conflict?
No.
Harper?
No.
Hartke?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jay?
No.
Kibler?
No.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Langenheim?
Yes.
Maxwell?
No.
McGuire?
No.
Michaels?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Petrie?
No.
Rosales?
Yes.
Schrader?
No.
Schwartz?
No.
Alex?
No.
Quisenberry?
No. Motion failed. 14 to 5, Mr. James, 14 to 5.
Well, I was at that 34% school.
Okay. All right. That closes, Mr. Hartke?
Yeah. To follow up, because it seems like a lot of the concerns people have with this are more in whether our public health department is fair, as whether the display is the issue. Could we look at forming some sort of investigative group or subcommittee, or somebody actually maybe look at addressing these problems with Public Health District? If so many restaurateurs, if so many people have problems with how our inspection regime is being handled, we should deal with that and not just complain about it and move on to another thing. So I hope we can work on that.
Okay, that's a suggestion. Mr. Schrader?
I don't find fault in that, Josh. That would be fine, but this has been the only vehicle we've had to discuss issues like this. And that's fine, if we can do that, that's fine for that. The other thing, too, is, and I've passed it on through Mr. Kurtz, the Board of Health, if there's some way we could expedite new restaurant startups out in the county with an extra fee. And I would like to also engage in that kind of discussion, too, if there's some way that that can be done, not to impede or denigrate the health and safety we have currently, but if there's a better way. Mr. Roberts even brought that up at our meeting, Mr. Kurtz, is that correct? But he kind of backed that off when he mentioned Walmart or something. I wasn't sure where he was going with that. But he didn't want to give big corporation upper hand versus little guy. That needs to be discussed. So I would look forward to that discussion and other discussions, too.
Pop-ups are another hot trend that are not possible in Champaign County at this point. What do you need?
As a board member of the CU PhD, I am open to all of this issue. I think it's important. As a businessman and a restaurant owner, I don't want to have to be delayed if there's a chance that we could expedite something like this. And I certainly will investigate on my own and see what we can do about taking care of that situation. John knows, my door is always open. When he needed somebody to discuss it with, he was in my office and we talked about it. And I'll do that with any board member, obviously. So, in fact, I have, down the road here with Jeff, he called me, and we're going to do the same thing. We're going to get together and see what I can do to help in other issues. And I may not be here when the placards are brought up again. John will be, and John will be. We'll see what happens when that takes place. You might have me on public participation on it, so one or the other. But five minutes, is that what I get? Five minutes? Okay.
And the clock will be running, I can guarantee you.
Chair, I just want to say, in December, I'm going to give this issue my full attention.
Okay, thank you, Mr. James. I'm just going to make one comment from the chair's report. Strategic Planning Committee has realized that they will not be able to give you something before the end of this board term. So we are changing our focus on evaluating the success of the current strategic plan, which we will hand over to the new board to do with what they will. And that's all I had for consent agenda. I had A1 through 3, and that's it. Is that correct? All right, thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.